Can we please have a call?
Parker.
President.
Diutah.
Here.
Montesina.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Cidos Carter. Salcito. And Rosco.
Here.
We have four.
Can I get a motion to excuse absent council members?
Make a motion to excuse Vanessa Cidos Carter and Crystal.
I'll say it.
Thank you.
All right, can we get one please?
Clark.
Hi.
Diutah.
Hi.
Montesina.
Hi.
Parker.
Hi.
And Rosco.
I have.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So now item 2.8, 2025 Strategic Plan Workshop. I refer to the city manager.
I'll keep this off. Well, beautiful day in Colorado. Thank you everyone for being here today. This is always very, very exciting to kind of like be able to talk, to come together, and just really dive in into like what is it that we're going to work for our community in the next few years? What is it that we are going to dedicate our time, our resources, and how do we come together? Because one of the things that you have heard me say in this new part of my life as city manager is how much I enjoy working as a team. And that to me is one of the most important things that we do is how we support one another in delivering services for our community. No department does this work alone. We do it together. And I do want to just really lift that up as we have the discussions today. So we have an agenda. I'm going to cover what we're going to be doing this afternoon. I'll be talking to you for five long minutes. I'm not going to do that. Then we're going to have an opportunity to have the executive team, everybody here today. You will hear from them. And this is like a sneak peek of a lot of work that was done in the past two years. So one hour of our time does not do justice to all the work that was accomplished. I just want to make sure that you understand like this is just like highlights. We're going to come back to you in a regular session to also dedicate a little bit more time to kind of celebrate and acknowledge these accomplishments. We are going to have Riva, who you've all met, meaning you met with Riva in advance of today's workshop, all council members' day. Riva is our official facilitator for our conversation as we prepare for our next city planning. Just we're really honored to have her, former city manager, and just really understands the work we do as municipalities. So thank you for being with us today and for waiting here. Around 5 o'clock, we're going to have a wonderful dinner catering. When dinner's ready, we'll figure out what point we are, we'll take a break, kind of have some food together, we'll go back to Riva and wrap up. That's what we have for this first section of your agenda tonight. And then we have some items on the consent agenda for you this evening that you will have to tackle. Dessert will be after consent, so your motivation to get the consent will be dessert. So in terms of what is our strategic plan adoption timeline? We are here today on April 21st. So today is going to be our brainstorming session and just really framing up what are those buckets and those community goals, ambitions that you have as a council and for staff to have an opportunity to listen directly from you. On the 27th, we are intending to go back to you and again present a little bit more of our accomplishments during our regular council session. And on June 10th, we're going to bring back to you what we hear today in the shape of our strategic plan for 25, 27 years. So that is how our timeline will work. Just as a reminder, when we are talking today in terms of our accomplishments, we are recording on those seven goals of the council. And those were the priorities that you had identified in your 2025 strategic plan. So we're going to have an opportunity to hear from departments. But some departments can't cross across those goals again just because we're not excited for working together and tackling different areas of those priorities of the council through our works. But most, every department has been assigned at least a priority so that we make this afternoon throw for you and stay to our time. Just I want to like again just acknowledge the team. This is your executive team. It's a lot of work that goes into doing the work we do. And I just want to appreciate you all and know that you bring to work the level of excellence and commitment to Watsonville that is very unique. So I want to thank you all for the work you do. And you'll get to hear from all of them today. Fire chief well represented here. He might join us later if he makes it back in town sometime. This is a slide that's worth passing to really acknowledge all the work that has been accomplished. When you look at, you know, there's a lot of work planned actions that supported the council goals. And there's a lot that was completed. A ton of work that is ongoing, which means that you can expect that we're always going to be working on those things. They don't start at hand. It's just kind of like what we do as part of our work. So there's a ton of work in our action plan that is being acknowledged as ongoing. There's a lot of items that are in progress for today's plan. We try to anticipate like if we knew we were finishing something by June 30th, it's being acknowledged as completed. But if it's not going to be done by June 30th, then it's definitely being accounted as being in progress. And then about 15 items on our work plan were delayed for reasons, you know, that we had no control over. But a ton of work definitely completed, in progress, or ongoing. And then you have a breakdown in your folder where you can have, if you see this report here, it's every single category, every single work plan action, you will see the status of it. So if you want to be curious about what's up all of this, it's all in here in great detail. All right. How can I do that? Good? I got to set the pace for the rest of all of us that only have three minutes. So here we go. So economic development, I'm going to kind of tackle these goals just to kind of for continuity of speakers. But this is one that again, not one department does alone. There are IT goals or ID action plans listed on the economic development, CDD, kind of diving into this. But if you look, what was the council making to accomplish? You wanted to focus on developing a strong and visible city plan that helps strengthen and diversify our city economy for all. You wanted to support and grow our existing businesses. You asked us to focus on attracting new businesses, industries, enhancing our workforce development, provide a light in downtowns, and encouraging entrepreneurs to invest in our city, really growing entrepreneurs locally. So there's a lot of work, as you can see, that was accomplished. And again, I think there's a couple of things that were delayed. And again, like that's the loophole, the fiber loop that requires a big investment is delayed not for reasons that we control, right? Like we're trying to do that planning. And I think there's a policy that we're not yet able to work on. But everything else pretty much got to complete. I want to kind of celebrate, you know, some of the things that we have accomplished in terms of economic development. I think Mayor, this is Mayor Rosco's idea, but it really has been a great tool to connect with local businesses and celebrate them and increase their visibility. So we definitely need to call that out as a win in terms of supporting local businesses. We are, we had a code enforcement study session and your update this week, I've actually already shared with some of you what is it that we're going to be doing next in terms of increasing our capacity for code enforcement. Our wayfinding project, it came in, we have our bids, it's moving right along. So that's another way that it's going to lift our city image. Our hoteling 17th policy that you adopted last council meeting, that is touching on your, how we're laying all the ground in economic development. I think we have from Mariana supermarket to the new warehouse distribution, to the mini storage facility. I mean, it's a really beautiful project. It really enhances that corner right across from the hospital. It's coming along beautiful. I know it's a mini storage, but hey, you know, that is the project that was approved for that. And it's just a really nice project that we entered way for city. We have a new Starbucks, hopefully not many more coming. But hey, new sponsor that now's left. Black and is expanding, so that's another business that is growing locally. And we just really, we reopened El Frigolito, they're thriving, they're doing really, really well. So there's a lot of positive news when it comes to economic development. We also adopted our downtown specific plan. And that's a big win because we do have guidelines that, you know, we can't control what the private investors are doing, but we have laid out the foundation for businesses to grow or build in our downtown should that the market be ready for those conditions. We have a lot of work to be ready. I have to say that we're in the midst of planning for 2050 general plan. That is a big planning document that will guide Watsonville into the future. A lot of public engagement, as you see, have been conducted to support the 2050 general plan. We hope that you will be able to see the general plan coming for adoption towards the end of this year is our goal. So and we seem to be on track to accomplish that. Our community development team is a very small but mighty team. They are busy. Development is cyclical, comes and goes. We can't control, you know, what comes to the county, it comes down, you know, to the counter. But, you know, we have had 180 code enforcement cases open and processed through this last year, 82 planning permits, 32 zoning and new kind of businesses trying to come to town, and over 1,000 building permits that were processed in just 12 months. So basically, this team supporting economic development and residents in Watsonville. I am humbled to take this portion now because I have my dear friend and expert in housing with us. If you have difficult questions, I'll refer them to Carlitos, but I'm going to present on the slides. Housing was another goal of the council. Housing is being an ongoing item that is super important and is being always important to our community. Housing affordability, removing barriers to access to stable quality and affordable housing, and striving to create the opportunity to add housing to meet the demands of our community. That was your goal in 2023, 2025. There's a lot that we have done, but perhaps one of the biggest wins, don't let me lie, right? Is the adoption of our housing element. We kind of entered the game a little delayed, competing for the few consultants that can do that work in a state. But here we are, we adopted our housing, safe cycle housing element. So that is good work by again, Carlos and Matt who worked on that on behalf of the city. We have our 5x8 mixed-use development. We hope to see a great round. The ground is ready. Everything is ready for that project to start. We hope that we can see some movement that then on main street for you to see. I think Maya's dream and Tabasa Garden are just two great projects that really demonstrated how our team has been able to take new state laws, apply them, and expedite the approval of housing in our community. We are an example statewide in how well we've done that. And that is definitely a win again for our community, just bringing housing for people that really, really need it. From farm workers, people at risk of homelessness, people with special needs are now have missing units of aid. We have the Habitat for Humanity project on Airwood Boulevard, there's going to be new housing, the transit center is going to be a big, a big project coming into our downtown, really going to reshape that area as we know it. And just continue to leverage, you know, from CDPG to Joe Serna to any friends that we can to support housing projects. I know the team is really active in supporting housing in that way. Yeah, so I think that pretty much. And, you know, the way that we've been able to use CDPG, CDPG really is our application of CDPG not only supports housing, but other things from recreation to our senior center renovation was also supported by the housing team through the CDPG run. So a lot of good work accomplished there. And I'm going to pass it to Public Works Director Lindbergh for next question.
Oh, who is it?
Yeah.
Oh. Thank you.
These are some projects, most of these are underway right now. The Freedom Road reconstruction was completed, kind of going from the bottom. And then the fish ladder is finalizing soon. The landfill, you guys were all at, that's a picture of you out there last week. And Zone 2 reservoir, foundation excavation, these are just, it's nice to highlight these because if you rewind about a year and a half ago, we were in our PLA nightmare of not being able to get these, all of these projects were held up because of that. So not all of them, Freedom was underway by the time I got here. But being able to, you know, bid the landfill again and be successful. And then the Zone 2 reservoir, being able to bid, I believe that one bid without the PLA. It just, it enabled us to get some of these projects done that were like on pause for so long with this backlog of projects, especially in the water, wastewater, that we were really feeling a lot of pressure. So it's nice to, really nice to see construction going on. Next slide. Jimmy, go back to the three. Was it one? Okay. And these are ones that we are coming up on, the complicated one down the bottom, that's our Headworks, that's our $37 million that we are hoping to offset with as much free money as possible and working with the Army Corps and all of our earmark requests that we put in just a couple of weeks ago. And then our backup plan is our state revolving fund loan that we would have. We know we're probably going to have to pay some of it back, but it would be sure nice to have some free money. So that one, the design is done. This, the design itself was over a million dollars, incredibly complicated. We've been out for the wastewater treatment plant, I remember it's the really steep building. It's where the sewage comes in initially. So it is smelling is part of the tour, but we can't do anything else with that working and working correctly. So that's going to be huge for us to be able to continue our service out there. And then just really quick, one of the ways that we're trying to maximize our positioning for funding is to align ourselves with PV water because so often a wastewater treatment plant just treats the water and either, you know, injects it back into the ground or out to the ocean or whatever. Ours is used for recycled water, purple pipe that goes to water, you know, irrigation for the agriculture community, which is so critical for the Central Valley. So knowing that that is where our recycled water goes and you can't get recycled water unless the Headworks works, is a way that we're working with PV water to leverage ourselves to be able to get more funding because of how critical our plant is for the economic stability of Central Coast and Aggie and everything that we rely on here. Some other projects, the wastewater treatment plant, electrical work, if you recall, that was $17 million that we got in FEMA money. And that was, I don't know, whoever designed to put an electrical component right next to a levee that is holding back the river, but we didn't move it higher so that if it ever floods again, that would be not in a flood zone and so that it would preserve the electrical components. We're doing either one down in the bottom corner, payment management plan, we're starting to see more planning with that. Year one is going out to bid for the digouts and slurry seals that we're doing. This was a loanie that we did last summer that looked so beautiful. So those are just areas, obviously, more repair projects and full reconstruction for a lot of roads are needed. We know this and I'm sure we'll get into some of the funding needs for that a little bit later on. Do you have any slides remaining or does it go to airport?
To airport. Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to talk fast, so you got to listen fast. So when it comes to the airport, the next two slides you're going to see are what's going on currently and then we're looking two years out. One of the things I'd like to say upfront is the airport itself is really a small city. It's a community within a community. And so a number of the items that we have to work on, even though we're highly regulated by the FAA and the state who permits the airport, we're really relying on what you see here. None of those actions would have really happened without other departments. We couldn't have done the zero emissions, 40%, we started to, two years ago, we had no zero emission vehicles. Now 40% of the airport's vehicles were zero emission. We couldn't have done that without the help of people like the city's clerk's office and people like Public Works to help us bring down onboard. Where you see the airport security gate project, that was a grant from the FAA, but we couldn't have done it because we leveraged working with IT, leveraging the police department, security department, security processes, and Public Works security processes to leverage that. So we didn't have to go out. So without IT, we wouldn't be able to pull that off. The unleaded fuel, we are only, we are one of three airports in the entire nation that sell unleaded aviation fuel. All aviation fuel right now is leaded. And there's a move in California to move to unleaded fuel by 2030. We're one of the first launch customers for that fuel. But we couldn't have pulled that off without legal. We had to go through legal to make sure that we had the right contracts together in order for that to happen. And then the last one there, the airport pollution control facility, we were able to work with that, once again with Public Works, because we leveraged their process in order to go out and determine how we could go through a bid process. So many of the things that we do on a day-to-day basis, driving the airport, we can't do because we're only staff of 10. And so in the past year, these have been some of the important things we've done. And I just really need to thank my department associates here for pulling it off. Some of the things you don't see are some of the emergency procedures that we're going to be working with fire, the Fire in the Sky event and the fourth grade field trip, we'll talk about it later, that we worked with Nick and Alicia at the library. And not to mention, we wouldn't be able to make it if we didn't have people like Mad and Marissa helping us figure out the money and some of our HR challenges. And then again, on occasion, we do have to call on PD to come by, but we have a couple of wild people around, so that's another story. Next slide. So as we look out into the future, we have some challenges ahead of us, but the, what I'm trying to do is we look at the 2023, if you remember, the airport layout plan and the master plan, we spent a lot of cerebral work. For my first starting here in 2011 to 2019, we fixed a lot of broken stuff. We got $7 million with the grant and I can fully assure you that the airport is in a position right now where it's physically probably the best it has been in a long time. But we need to get ready for the future. And the last three years have been what we call cerebral exercises. And we're still looking for grants as we begin to move forward with our payment grant. The FAA looks at payment as a key thing, runways, taxiways, and payment. So we've got a rehab coming up. We also have the environmental determination relative to runway 927. So we still are trying to determine how we're going to move all of that at our PIS, but we see them reviewing it now. The conundrum for the airport continues to be the entire 330 acres of the Minnesota Airport is designated by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife as critical habitat for the state amphibian, the red-legged frog, and the two-toed salamander, and by the state of California Fish and Wildlife, it's critical habitat for Santa Cruz sunflower, also known as tarpaulin. We cannot put a shovel in the ground unless we go through a number of hoops in order to make things happen. So all that work that you've seen in the past that I've just talked about, it's always on hard surface. But the airport will not be able to move into some of those master plan areas unless we begin to develop on the dirt. Joby is already built into at least the ability to have a vertiport in the future. That will happen. You will be able to build a block of airport, pull out your iPhone, and have a VTOL aircraft come and take you to San Francisco. That, I can assure you that that will happen. Not anytime that I'm around, but it'll happen sometime when basically you're around and your kids are around. The airport fuel rack, we are constantly dealing with environmental challenges and the airport fuel rack is one in which we've been working with the county of Santa Cruz to ensure that we have a secondary containment device. Everything at the airport must be contained so there aren't fuel spills and there aren't issues that are hazmat related. So we're constantly reviewing our current process and procedures. The biggest thing coming up for us next year are the two ones in the upper right corner. Levi's Stadium, in 2016, the Super Bowl was here. The Super Bowl was here and that was a new experience. I'd never experienced anything like it. We had $80 million worth of aircraft on the ramp over a weekend. $80 million worth of aircraft on the ramp. That was a bad weekend for me because basically I just spent a lot of time going back and forth with the airport manager, we had security. And we got, the way it started was I got a call from the senior vice president of the NFL saying we'd like to meet with one of the airport managers at Fremont and San Jose. Not thinking he was asking me to come and sign up for play, because my playing days were long over, but I met there with other airport managers, other airport managers, and we were all panicked because we were going to be satellite airports. I just said to tomorrow, we just got a notice from them saying we want to come back to Watsonville, but they dinged us on our security. The security gate, gate that you saw earlier on, with the help of my friend here, we are working very hard to ensure that by September 1st, the only people that are on the field are people that are authorized on the field. You have to be a tenant with a tenant carrying card or an individually unique ID number assigned to you, which from a finance perspective will be their account numbers. As if they're doing something crazy, you can charge them on each account by issuing citations instead of trying to track them down. So everyone will be identified. So the other one is FEMA. The other one is FEMA and we are looking, FIFA, and we're looking at that also coming. So we're going to have a lot going on and I think it's going to be successful. Last slide. We've got one more slide. We're jumping into community engagement. We will always be committed to this level of community engagement. These are our four pillars. Airport open house, the car show, which is this weekend, and I'm hopeful that the mayor will be able to come and select third mayor's choice award this weekend, right? I'm hopeful that, and that the city manager will come and select the city manager award. We continue to do the fourth grade field trips along and the historical display. And I would make a personal request that as you consider qualifications in the future, please consider the EAA 119 and the Monterey Bay 99s. EAA 119s continue to give kids free rides every weekend, every first Saturday from September to May. The 99s now are, we used to have our historical aircraft display and all you could do is go up to the fence and grab it and look at the airplanes. The 99s are now serving as dosers. So we have people to actually go out and take people around the aircraft and talk to them. So that said, our fourth grade, our next fourth grade field trip is tomorrow. If anyone wants to come out and help us out, we appreciate it. We were down short the last time. I had to go out and do the compass roads and explain to people the magnetic principles of north, which was challenging for the fourth grader who kept asking me why it would have to be magnetic north. So, but anyway, that's the airport.
My school will be there tomorrow.
I think it's Bradley, right?
Perfect, I'll be sure.
We want you to be gone.
Give it a minute. They also are in the city.
I apologize. Okay, so finance is all, the core goal is all about physical health. And we are an example of how we work with everybody, everybody and every department to achieve this. So our biggest two tasks that we do is produce a balance, but hopefully we work with our department, city managers, city council to accomplish that. Our second, second thing that we work on is the city audits. So our biggest goal is to have unqualified opinion that's detailed, that's transparent. And that's, that's pretty much it for us in terms of those two goals, but we have day-to-day keeping up a payroll, a payable, revenue collection, all of that. And because we're timely and we try to do such a good job, it makes the other two big tasks easier. And that's for us.
Oh, wow.
One, two, three.
Charlotte? We must be doing better than home. I'll take that as there's a lot of money in this.
Okay, so, so I just want to say, I think we're up, yeah, we're up. So Porthead is more up and like Assistant Chief David Rodriguez. First, I want to say I really appreciate how Rayvon brings in everyone into the conversation of success because really nobody does it alone. And I just really admire that Rayvon, like just on point. Really takes what Tamara was saying earlier in the beginning and puts it on steroids, right? We rely on each other. It's awesome. I rely a lot on Assistant Chief Rodriguez. We just learned earlier today, and I won't be able to say this for very long, but we're fully staffed. So a couple of weeks ago, we were down 16 positions, now we're fully staffed. I owe that to him and to the rest of the team that actually does all the work.
Congratulations.
I commend Natalie. I commend finance, you know, Tamara, for being understanding. It's just huge for us. Um, so with that said, um, the past two years for us, we've implemented and successfully utilized Flock, thanks to Bobby Rodriguez back there, who brought the program to us. And Flock has helped us really solve a lot of crimes and get people their property back. It's just an amazing, amazing program. We recorded efforts and participated in National Light Out, which you all are part of. Our drone program is up and running. We have an old vehicle now dedicated to just that. Outside agencies are asking us to go help them. And we raised thirty, little, over thirty-four thousand dollars from the Pink Patch Project, which has been very successful for us and really helps. It's a community engagement thing that helps families in South County, specifically Watsonville, get services when they're experiencing cancer. What else do you want to say? Oh, and then we also have our police, our police ping nine, who is, uh, specializes in locating, uh, drugs and firearms. And then I'll pass it on to Assistant Chief Rodriguez to finish it off.
All right, I'll go ahead and tackle the rest of it. The next item I wanna highlight is, um, we've, over the last two years, we've been awarded two OTS grants. That's Office of Traffic Safety. Totalling three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, a little more than that. This is not only for traffic safety enforcement, but it's much more than that. It's a community engagement, it's education, because we realize just handing out tickets is a very small piece of the, piece of the puzzle. It's all about engaging with our community, connecting with them to figure out how to best, how to, how to best, um, serve them in a way that they understand the traffic laws. They understand, uh, being safe on the roads, whether they're either in a car, on a bike, or on foot. Next item is we've established our youth summer academy, and that's something that's grown over the last two years. I think the first year we did it, we only had about twenty, twenty-five youth participating, to a point where last year it was about fifty. So of course, we specialize in, in police operations. So we introduce our young people to police operations, but it's so much more than that. It's, um, learning how to interview, so hopefully preparing them for their next job interview, how to build a resume, uh, how to just conduct themselves, leadership training, physical, physical training that they might, um, see if they do end up wanting to be a police officer at some point. Next item is we acquired and installed fleet cameras with license plate reader technology. And Chief highlighted the Flock camera system. This is just one of the pieces, the pieces of technology that goes hand-in-hand with that Flock, um, program. Flock is, they're cameras that are in stationary positions throughout the city, whereas the fleet cameras are moving with our patrol vehicles. So they work hand-in-hand with Flock, but they allow us to solve many more crimes because they're moving with our patrol cars. And last but not least, we were awarded two alcohol beverage, beverage control grants, totaling over a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. And similar to OTS, it's more than just enforcement. Enforcement is a small piece of that grant as well. It's about education, um, and, and also engagement in that one. And just to highlight OTS and ABC grants, it's not common for cities and agencies to be awarded these grants multiple years in a row. But it's just a testament to, obviously, they understand our need, but also they know that their money, when granted to us, is gonna be used effectively. And we're, and we meet all the grant objectives every single year. That's it for the meeting. Pass it on to Fire.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilman. Tom Adello, Fire Division Chief for Chief Lopez. So, uh, yeah, again, Rayvon was pointing out with everybody's, uh, parts and, and just about all the city accomplishments, and fires no different. So to start off with, uh, we've been upgrading and maintaining our fire station one. It's a top left picture there. Um, we've, uh, I'll say by, the first project we completed is actually last year, the year before, was, uh, we replaced all the windows with sound and energy efficient. The building was built in the early eighties and hadn't been upgraded since. So that was a big improvement for sound and saving our HVAC system with the temperature control. We painted the, all the exterior walls, uh, and we use a traditional colored scheme. And protective sealant was involved in the, in the painting because we were experiencing some, uh, some moisture issues. And you can see, it's on the list, but far left there are the apparatus stores. That's a recent project that's been, uh, completed at both stations. Continuing on with our traditional color scheme. So that, and then, uh, so we've also, we're increasing our participation in local events. We continue to accept invitation to local events like the Trump and Treats and National Light Out, where we, all our units are out that night. I've seen an increase for requests, and we accept them and participate in, uh, community groups or neighborhoods, uh, wanting to come in and discuss emergency preparedness for residents and local neighborhoods. And we enjoy that. We partner with the Salvation Army on a few different fronts, up in there to collect toys for, for Christmas for local kids in the teens program. We assist with back-to-school backpack distribution event and then the Teddy Bear Club arts. We're a more and continue to be popular, uh, summer, uh, events and activities with our, our Fire Youth Academy. Uh, we started that in, uh, pre-COVID, in 2019. It's still been very, very popular, we hope. Two, two big sessions per summer. We usually have a waiting list. It's very popular. We enjoy it. Kids enjoy it. You get a pretty good taste of the fire service. One big accomplishment is we initiated last year, um, the paramedic sponsorship program. In this program, we identify local EMPs in our area that had a huge desire to work for the Watsonville Fire Department, to serve our community. One aspect, which is the ability to afford paramedic school. And so we partnered with South Bay and Monarch Institute College, and we sponsored some young adults in that program. And we're happy to share that one of them has already completed the program and has a paramedic license and is in the current, uh, twenty, twenty-five academy, which is ongoing right now. And then, uh, another, um, another sponsor's, uh, young man just recently finished the program and, uh, received his paramedic license by passing the National Insurance Test. So the plan for him is to put him in the next available, uh, academy, which we're hoping will be this fall. Speaking of the academy, we're, we continue to be strong sponsors and participants in Santa Cruz Regional Fire Academy. It's a sixteen to eighteen-week academy. We usually have one a year in spring, and it's currently going on, as I say. In 2023, we had two academies of spring and fall, and in 24, we have one. It's a cooperative effort with any fire agency in Santa Cruz County that wants to participate. But it's, it's, um, um, very beneficial and, um, and to train our firefighters to come online. And, and more recently, uh, we joined with the, the city's social media team to establish our recruitment team. And we're, we're coming up with ideas to attract more young adults to, to show them fire service, just attractively just get them to apply for our department and to serve our community. We, so far, we've created a recruitment video that's pretty good. It's, it's pretty exciting, and it should be attractive to young adults. And, uh, and we also have some, we're gonna have some free material to take to career fair, job fairs, career days, anywhere we can attract, uh, young adults to apply to the fire service. And speaking of staffing, um, by the end of December twenty-five, I'm hopeful because, uh, we are preparing to make additional job offers to our last four applicants. And so the goal will be to get them into the fire academy next, this next fall. And so the end of December, they should be able to come online. So then we'll be fully staffed as well. Uh, let's see. Yeah. And report. Thank you.
So the next, uh, topic of volume is engagement and wellbeing. And of course, the library is, um, very involved with our community in all sorts of aspects, such as the written and the word, uh, and, uh, Chief mentioned. We can't do this without people our partnership with the other departments and making sure that we all work together to ensure, um, we provide good opportunities for our youth in our community, but now and then, but everyone in our community. So as part of our last two years, um, accomplishments, we have a BiblioVan did an outreach master plan. So we, with the assistance of IT department and the G.I.F., we mapped where our residents live and who have library parks. And then we determined where the under-studied areas were. And so we went and did a pop-up event. And we also, um, do a month, have a monthly schedule where our BiblioVan goes up, visits the sites. One week is all children, one week is all adults. And so that's on a monthly basis. And, um, in order to be, make this successful, we revamped our marketing strategy. We wanted to make our presence on social media, uh, uh, different. And so we looked at what works, what doesn't work through our data analysis. And we also are really, um, committed to our seniors in our community. So our, we're revamping our library program and providing services to our homebound community. We have BiblioVan. We've started to realize that our BiblioVan isn't enough for the amount of requests that we're getting because we've also placed that, um, announcement on our website. So we're looking at leasing another vehicle so that we have more staff to go out in our community. As we are, are the preferred space for individuals to come and visit, um, we, as you can see, we revamped our library space so that there'd be more of a play space, a play area, be more, um, engaging. Noise is not a factor for us anymore. The days of shushing are over. We enjoy noise. We encourage people to come in and socialize. So we want to encourage all groups. And so we partner with a lot of, um, local nonprofit organizations who table every second of Friday of the month and provide resources on homelessness, um, how to get their identification back when they lost everything, um, send itas, how to apply for the IRS for the little ones. So we may try to provide to them, you know, well-earned. So it's one way of, of connecting our, um, families with other organizations. And then also Measure R has been a great impact for us. It enables us to open weekends on Saturdays and allow us to add additional programming for all ages. And so, um, that's been such a great, great, great eye-opener. We get, uh, individuals coming out to all our programs, at least a hundred and plus. Watsonville Reads is our commitment, through the Friends of the Library, who also sponsor our programming. And that is a, a way for us to be, uh, make relevant our community and various technical sets, make up our community. So, um, stay tuned for next year at Watsonville Read, and we'll focus on hearing voices. So that's just a highlight. And we're already planning, and this is already for 2026. So like I said, Measure R is such, does a, uh, is a great resource and a revenue for the library. And we contract with a lot of, um, like, Southern Martha's School Bag, P.E.D. Health Press, to provide, um, wellness classes, mental health classes, cooking classes. And, um, we do a lot now in the community. We go out into the parks also. Maybe storytime, we get up to seventy-five, uh, individuals with their kids. And what's so amazing is that we, we see the fathers coming out with their little ones. And then we see the grandparents with the newer generation. So it's a sense of community and, and well-being and engagement. So that's one.
With that, in the Parks and Community Services, we go back to Flock, like, twenty twenty-three or so. We were still kind of rebuilding our team from the end of COVID, reopening all of our programs that should be shut down for a couple of years. So we really worked hard on that, and Measure R really helped us kind of just fast-forward all that work really, really quickly. Uh, so our programming, especially for our youth and our seniors, have kind of just exploded over the past couple of years thanks to the new funding and, um, and reopening programs again after, after COVID. This past year, we created our first annual impact report. You guys have all seen this, but if you haven't, um, I can pass this around to you. We're super, super proud of this document, and it really just highlights the great work that our department does. I'm gonna just, just run through some of the, some of the stats that are included in this report. Uh, the senior center, we serve, uh, anywhere between seventy-five to a hundred seniors every single day. We had over nineteen thousand check-ins just in 2024 alone. Through our passports of fun, the youth center and the science workshop award, or re-place, as it's known now, uh, we, we serve thirty to fifty each every single day, with over eight thousand check-ins in just 2024. The youth center also celebrated its thirty-first year of service back in September of last year. So we're super excited. Across all of our events and programs, in just last year, we served close to a hundred thousand people. Taught four hundred-plus people how to swim. We had over eleven thousand registrations in our, our camp, wow, summer camp program. And, um, over fifty-seven thousand people came to our strawberry festival in 2024. Our parks are continuing to be just loved as, as much as ever. Thanks to new technology, we've been able to determine that we, that we serve, um, well, about a million people come through our parks every year. Maybe not individuals, but there's about a million visits throughout all of our parks throughout the community. Um, so lots and lots going on there. We also had seventy volunteers contribute over fifteen hundred hours just in 2024 as well. We continue to lead the Asset Builder Collaborative, which is a collaborative of about, of about twenty-five different youth-serving organizations throughout South County. We bring them all together every month to work on, uh, common goals and, and making sure that our goals are aligned so that as we, as we serve, we through the school day and into the after-school group, and the nights and the weekends, we're all kind of working towards the same, the same type of things. We completed our park assessment project last year also that, that helped us determine what our deferred maintenance needs are across our, um, our, our whole city. So that combined with our building assessment, it was kind of a couple of years back, helped us determine that we've got about fifty-five million dollars in deferred maintenance needs across the whole park system, uh, which isn't, I mean, I think, a, a great, it's something to highlight, other than that, like, it gives us, it gives us a better sense for what we need to work towards and what our, our highest needs are. And I think that, that in and of itself kind of positions us better in terms of, you know, the secure funding through grants, through the general fund or, or other means. Because now that, now that we know what we need, we can better allocate for, for, for those types of things. We adopted our Urban Forest Management Plan. It's the first management plan that the city's ever had. And we continue to work on the two ordinance that's kind of tied to that. And also, lots of capital improvements have gone on with our departments. Talked about the senior center earlier. We've got a coffee bar and a kitchen there, and a front entryway. But ADA, ADA push button that we needed for years out there, just got installed in the past couple of days. So our seniors are super excited about that. The youth center saw some huge renovations over the past couple of years also. Our gymnasium looks like it's almost grand again. We have a new, uh, check-in counter when you first walk in so that, so that the site's more safe and secure and you're greeted as easy walking the door. We worked on some street meetings through Caltrans, and then before the end of this fiscal year, our new Callahan, uh, pickleball courts will be opened to the public. So first pickleball, our first official pickleball courts here in Watsonville. We're, we're super excited about that too. And then, of course, the big projects, uh, we started construction of the Ramsey Park Renaissance Project, and we're just about in the middle of that. If you haven't been by Ramsey lately, you can start to see the play court at the start of your ride, see it off Main Street. So, uh, it's starting to really come together, and, um, it's become a reality. That's all I got for you. At least I got.
Next. Do you want to go a little bit?
Hey, I'm RT, the city clerk. Uh, I'll kick us off on a slide that is regarding efficient and high-performance government. So, um, that was one of the council priorities at the last time, to really create some efficiencies throughout the city and, um, create better processing of documents and make them more available to the community. So, um, some of the accomplishments that the city clerk's office did over the last couple of years is our city council, uh, council chamber upgrades, paving the way for virtual access to meetings and broadcasting in HD. Uh, it's like, um, so previous to this, uh, doing Zoom, virtual participation was extremely difficult for council. We had sound issues. We had a variety of challenges in having council participate in that manner, so it was just phone calls. Having something like this, despite the council not currently actively using the Zoom participation, it still allows us to have clear audio and, um, video transmission and during our council meetings, not only for us, but for all the other commissions and boards that could use it, or any of the neighboring jurisdictions that use our council chambers. In listening to that, we're broadcasting in HD, which is great. We were using NTSC, which is like the four-by-three frame, which is really tiny and outdated. So now that we're doing HD, um, So now that we're doing HD, it's easier for us to download that and put it into like YouTube, for example, or share it through social media. There's some additional upgrades that will be part of the council chambers upgrade. For example, we have open captions, basically the text that comes out when we're speaking, when we're speaking, that's on the horizon. But this project has been like a four-year project for us. I just want to echo the sentiments by Rayvon and Shiva Mora about thanking IT for this, thanking Public Works for the upgrades to the power. We had some challenges when we officially said that we were done. And then we had some power outages and it resulted in a whole series of issues. Just kind of traversing through those challenges effectively and upgrading some of the power supply issues that we had there, finally we're up and running. And so we're really happy about that. Some of the other work that we've done this year, over the last couple of years, is upgrading our Next Request software, which is for our public records active request. We were able to handle approximately seven hundred and twenty-two public records active request in the last two years. What does that mean in layman's terms? It means that working collaboratively with the police, IT, airport, HR, finance, public works, it takes a whole team to just obtain these records that we're getting regularly. We released over eighteen thousand records in the last two years and that number just keeps climbing and climbing. So having efficiencies in software and the way we cross-communicate through our departments is really helping us be able to manage these because it's not like we can just delay them. We have to respond to them or they just kind of stack up on top of each other. So it's been really difficult to get those done, but as we kind of traverse through the P R A phase and working collaboratively with each other, we're learning together and we're, we're efficient in getting our responses out. We're six-sixfully coordinated and we've placed an of the charter on the 2024 ballot. So Councilmember Montesino spearheaded that and raised meritship. And so we started that, that effort at the end of the year, that year. And during Vanessa's tenure, we were able to put it on the ballot. And we made several changes to the charter. Some of them were more like cleanup, for example, like gender-specific language. Others were in relation to council compensation. And then we also had a separate question that talked about board and commission participation. And ultimately, what ended up happening with that is that now any resident in Watsonville can apply to be on our commission, creating a bigger pool of applicants for our community. We implemented a retention policy for emails. So previous to this, we did have the policy, we just hadn't acted on it. So we kind of pulled the trigger on that finally in the last couple of years. We were extorting way too many emails, emails that were just taking up a lot of space, emails that had information that necessarily we didn't have to retain. So we pulled the trigger on that, we got rid of those. That's just the first phase of the records cleanup that we're going to go on and do in the next couple of years. And then we're collaborating with the county on various years to have our office open in Watsonville. So previous to, just this last year, the county only had office hours in Santa Cruz. So we offered our building to have them can manage the passport services, you know, business licenses, marriages. Previous to that, we used to help them come in, but COVID kind of killed that off. So we're a lot with our county court. And we actually doubled the amount of times that they were here prior to COVID. So we're really excited and really happy about that. With that, I'll kick it off to Natalie. We'll bring her in.
Well, we're in H R. We have a small, mighty team of five of us, including myself. And basically, our accomplishments are supporting and hiring the four hundred and twenty employees that we currently have and the hundred full-time employees at each given time. So I'd like to think that we play an indirect part in all of this great work that's going on by helping to support all of the employees who are doing all of this work. I just wanted to highlight a couple of things to show you how, how much work our little team is doing. We conducted over a hundred and sixteen recruitments in the last two years and that resulted in onboarding seventy-five new full-time employees. We processed over two thousand six hundred and sixty-six personal action forms. So that's every time anybody gets a salary increase or a police officer changes their shift or somebody shifts to another supervisor, there's a process that goes behind every one of those little actions that our community is responsible for. Incorporated over seventy-two in-person trainings for our employees, helped to manage seventy-five workers' comp claims, manage over a hundred employee leaves, that's F M L A, credit stability, medical needs, et cetera. And in addition to all of the regular work that we're doing, we implemented a new online employment testing module, which allows us to conduct our pre-employment testing online rather than having these people come into a room and taking a test in person. We've been working through the class comp study, which is negotiations. And then we'll also be working through the revision of all of our job descriptions. And we are negotiating almost all of our groups, we hope to be delivered by the end of fiscal year. And thrown into that, we also have our case investigations, we've responded to completely, helping to guide departments through disciplinary processes, not looking at anybody. And anyway, it's been a busy, busy couple of years.
Last but not least.
I'll wrap it up. I'll make it easy. A lot of stuff that IT does, everybody feels. From what, oh, it's great. From Kelsman Clark's favorite topic, phones.
Yeah.
Yep. To moving from a dot org to dot gov, which seems like it wasn't that long ago, but it was, it was within the past two years that we moved to dot gov. And from Google over to Microsoft. A lot of these shifts over to more enterprise, business-friendly platforms that we can now build on and we are starting to build on those. Some of the internal stuff that we're doing, enterprise resource planning, which is Tyler, we're moving that to our cloud platform off of our, our own servers. So we're going to start having that online. This will allow people in the city to be able to not have to log in. It's very cumbersome to try to get to approving things when they're onsite versus when they're posted in the cloud. So we can allow people in this apartment facility, the logging into a cloud resource to be able to approve not only time, but money stuff. That's the list's favorite. P O's. Interplace Service Management. Internally, we request services from each other a lot. So whether we're requesting services from facilities, which is an internal service, they do, they do a lot, a lot of stuff. I don't know, their list just grows. Every time there's a request, there's ten more new requests right behind it and they get a lot of stuff done. Library and IT, we're all on the same platform. So facilities, library and IT, if you want to request a service, you go to servicedest.walsonville.gov. You put in your request and then that shows up. So now we can track time, we can track the request and we can even start the tracking assets that they're requested on. Because a lot of times you just think that, oh, we've called so many times on this one device, this one printer or the air conditioning. Now we can actually go back and say, how many people actually called on this one specific device? Or whatever it is, the asset, so that way we know that it doesn't, it's not actually called on that much. It just feels like it's, it's, you know, having a problem. Granted, there are some times where you're like, you're right, I think we touched this once a week and it's time to replace it. So that helps us justify the replacement. Some of the other, it's like lead line survey, doesn't seem like it's a big deal. It's a huge deal. The water services department, they go out and test every single connection to see if there's lead in the line and they had to document it all out. Not only that, but a lot of times when they, well, in most cases, the, the water shut-off, I guess, is that what it's called, the water shut-off place? The, right in front of the house, it was, in G I S, it was put in the middle of the property, on almost every single property, because every single property has a water shut-off. So what the, what the team did while they were out testing the lead, testing for the lead on all the pipes and the connections, is they geolocated, they have a thing with GPS, they pressed a button and that said, okay, this is now where it's located. So they took it out of the middle of the house and put it to the front, depending on where it's at. So that way, if it's overgrown with weeds or buried by rocks or, I don't know, somebody cemented it over the top of it, who knows? They know where it's at within six inches. So that's, that's pretty good accuracy and that's what we helped out with water services. We're also getting ready to deploy a data tracker app for, and dashboard for intersection striping because a lot of times we just need to know, it was paved over, what were the stripes that were here again? Or what was the signaling, the, the paint on the street? So now we'll have that in and out and a dashboard to be able to see when it's going to be updated and what was there previously. You can, you can read the rest of it. I think the biggest piece for us is, is improving process and developing process to get things moving from request to implementation with little to no friction internally. When the request comes in, it used to sit and mull about and almost get to deployment and then it would be pulled back for further thought and processing and whatnot. Now we get all of that done upfront. Once it begins, it's on. It, it just moves forward and it, I think that the thing that's really felt that from my team is, is that new process where you come in, you make the request, we meet with the departments, we go over. Courtney's behind herself like three deep, maybe four deep requests now, where she's, she's the next one in line and the next one in line, the next one in line for all of the requests in her department. But we manage that with a staff person and we get a lot of items done, which is good. That's it for IT. Thank you.
Do we have any questions for council?
I do.
Councilmember Dupro?
Just for a couple of departments, some of them seem like they're going pretty well. I have a question and looking at the survey that was, that was sent out, it doesn't look too great for us as a city. I don't know how many of you have a chance to look at it. And I guess, because I see the good work that like, you know, the police and fire are doing, but I'm looking at it's fifteen point four percent down in community engagement with both departments. What do you think is contributing to that? Because you guys are doing such great jobs and why isn't this, why isn't that reflecting with the community? And what could we do to change that?
We, we do, we include it in your packets. Each of you have a blue folder that is a courtesy of our police department, working with our crime analyst and also.
We understand the good work.
No, I understand. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Assistant Chief, I mean, because I just got, I had this conversation with him about my ninety. There is a report in, in that folder for, all available for you. Because my ninety is actually the survey of the actual people in Watsonville that interact with our police department. So the survey is people that may or may not have interacted with our department that have just an opinion like, you know, like most of us have an opinion about everything, right? That is the true feedback of our people that have actually interacted with the police department. I don't feel want to act too.
Yeah, because it, I mean, I saw the survey results as well. And it is kind of pleasant to me because over the last few years, we've increased our community engagement more so than we've ever done. It's no point where we hired a specific person to handle all that rather than have a sworn personnel kind of piece it together. We actually have an admin analyst who's in charge of all that. So she's been really, I mean, she's grown our efforts more than we could have ever imagined. One thing, just in brainstorming, is we're very youth-centered with our engagement. So there could be a, a piece of the community, you know, older, older point, parts of the community may be feeling a little left out. It's, it's a possibility, but we're really focused. We're, we're kind of headstrong on that youth engagement. We're, we believe that's kind of our bread and butter. So it could be, we, we need to expand to different age groups. That, that could be one explanation. The other thing is, you know, we do make a great effort. We have internal communications personnel who, you know, handle all of our social media. Obviously, not everyone's on social media. So there could be an element of the community that is missing, you know, some of those events or some of the deep, you know, the after actions that we put out on social media just for the simple fact that they're not on social media.
That, that, I mean, I brought you guys up first just because it really shocked me. I was like, well, this is not what I see. I mean, you know, when I do my national out, you guys are there, like it's, there's, you know, all these people engaging with you guys and then, and then they give us such a crappy number. And I was like, wait, this doesn't reflect how I'm seeing it. So what am I missing? You know, like, why did the rest of the people who took that survey feel that way? You know, so I, I don't know what we could do to improve that, but.
I think it's important to look at the demographic, well, two things. Twenty twenty-one was a scary time for a lot of people and there was like over-communication during COVID. So that could be one. And then two, the demographics, these are white people that make over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that own their house and live in District Seven. So I mean, that's pretty clear. What I'm saying is if we're going away so much on the survey results, we have to know that the survey is, is a sampling. It's not reflective of the whole city.
First of all, there was no area for, there's nothing says Latinos in any of this. And if you are Latino and you fill something out, you probably are going to put white because there's no other, that is what you are, your driver's license, that is. So I, when I looked at that, I saw it as a combination between white people and Latinos in that. That's how I saw it, because that's how it is. So, but you know, I mean, since you spoke, we're going to talk about yours. I was really, you know, the, the number of people that put infrastructure as being, you know, the, the number one issue when not too long ago was housing, which dropped to number five, you know, is telling me that people are really wanting to see us invest in the infrastructure. And that's what I hear out there. I hear roads and I've had to hear about Freedom Boulevard one more time. Oh, my God. It's like, you know what I'm saying? But yeah, no, when I looked at that and I saw white, I, I said, oh, well, there was nothing for Latinos and Latinos would mark white because that's what you technically are, you know? So, but, and, and I do understand what you said too about that it was during COVID. So there was over, like, you know, communication. But I don't know, that was just my, my thing on that. And then.
Was that the reference to COVID, was that because of the difference in where it was and where it is? I think that had a lot.
I, I think, I think those two surveys really reflect where we were in general in a historical point in time, right? Like in twenty twenty-one, coming out of COVID, people were really kind of like forward-looking and coming out of a very dark area, so like most people are.
So freaking happy.
And right now, probably not, but we can say wrong thing.
That's true.
So I, I just have two comments. I just wanted to point that out because I was like, well, you know, to me, it didn't make sense just because I see all the engagement happening and I didn't understand, I'm not understanding. Because all I tell, when I talk to older people, they love police and fire. So I'm like, I just wouldn't understand how that was correlating. But I do want to say something about the senior, the senior center. You know, and I want to say thank you, Nick, for continuing to prioritize that in our community.
Yes.
You know, I sit on that senior aging thing now.
Commission.
Commission. And I, I learned that a lot of communities do not invest in their seniors, with their seniors. They do not fund it at all. So the fact that Watsonville's really stepped up and prioritized it, that says a lot. So good job, I will continue doing that. And then I think I have questions more about, I don't know, like, like the runway issue. Like, are we going to talk about the airport more later or that?
Yeah.
And then also the economic development, which I'm sure we'll talk about more, I'll talk about more. But I was just kind of curious where we are with these issues, you know? Has that moved anywhere?
Yeah.
Oh.
I was getting to do it. Okay.
Okay, then that's good. Thank you.
Councilmember Ari Parker.
Fine, okay, so yeah, you know, my three pages of comments from my, my piece. A lot of it really just has to do, and this is, I, I think generally reflected a huge part is that you're out talking to people always. My, my senior neighborhoods love you guys. They do. They don't like me, they may not like Tamada, but they shine on you. This might be a trend and, and they don't particularly like what's going on with our roads because they want it now. I know that Courtney and the department, I just. I know that Courtney and the department, I just want to say thank you because reflective of how much we have to do doesn't mean you guys haven't been out there crazily doing things in District 7 and across the city. It's just the fact that people are more out there now and they're running around and they're looking at things and they bump 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 along the road. And yeah, I mean, we could, if we just created our own business to do streets, we'd make a lot of money.
Just to hear you flashing stops.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, no, and it's great. But yeah, I look at the flooding issue, the roads issue, the fireworks issues. It's the same in my district, speed and all these different things. But, you know, I feel like there's been a lot of communication from all the different departments that affect all those comments with District 7. And you know, we have a lot of voters and we have-- and that means they're closer to exiting this world. And I say that not facetiously. I say that that's because, that's why they write things down, they communicate. They talk about it because it means something to them. You know, they want to see it happen sooner rather than later. So I don't know, I mean, I was listening to every report and have experienced all these things and I see positivity. I'm so thrilled that you guys are finally fully, I mean, I can't tell you. I want to give, I think the police department should have a public party over there in the parking lot. And I'm not joking, this is huge. And then it's just a matter of, you know, how that rolls out now from that point on. Because I think even my seniors who really appreciate you guys, the comments I'm hearing are, you know, we're just a little nervous because there's just not that many. And they're aware, they follow our meetings and watch it. Some of them watch it online. They rarely show up, but they watch it. And they worry about it because they really value police and fire. And so notwithstanding, I want to give a compliment to Raymon, exactly what the chief said, which was, I really appreciated the fact that when you went and did your overview, you talked about everybody else because it is, you know, a relationship that helps everybody move forward. And I just like that. I really like that you highlighted that. Because even though everybody else didn't do that because they were focused on, you know, whatever it was, that's exactly what's happening in their departments as well. So--
Hundred percent.
Yeah. Notwithstanding homelessness is still an issue. It's a big issue. Yeah, across the board. And no matter what we all talk about, you know, it comes down to Marissa and then--
The charges are poured.
So, I mean, and that's really what it is, right? You know, your sentiment. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other members, questions, comments?
Let's just hear, see, we're going to dive into the survey. We kind of started off with a bunch of--
Thank you. Get over that in the infinite of time and the voters will go out. I doubt it, certainly. I don't know, really have to move. Sounds like most of you had a chance to review, so maybe-- Yeah. Backing me on this one.
Well, that's what I guess we said, I think we all know. Did you see the comment? You got the comment this time.
I got the comment from the comment. I didn't see it.
You didn't see it?
No.
Yeah. Well, it's up to you and it's obvious what you're doing.
Especially if you're-- Don't pay attention to the comment.
All right. Thank you, Nick. I'm just trying to catch us up with--
Yeah, that's great.
I'm not really sure why I need to go because you brought the police department to fully fund it. You have a fire department that's almost fully funded and you're pickleball. Pickleball. Special what we're doing here today.
Staff.
Staff, not funded, yeah.
I meant staff. Funded staff, all the things, all the good things. So I know I've met all the council, but for the staff I haven't met, I'm just Rita Felton. I'm her retired city manager and I do this, I work up and down the state. I have the pleasure of driving through your city today. And I know when I spoke to the council, I heard a lot of things you guys are concerned with. But I have to say, from an outside perspective, you guys look like you're doing really well. And then hearing what your department heads had to say today, your city manager, really kudos to your staff and your team and you as leaders of your community. It says a lot about how much is getting done, about the fact that your staff is working so well as a team because that's a big part of a well-run city that starts on the inside. And so today, we're going to just go over some highlights of working together and then dive into what I call the big buckets, which were in your strategic plan last year. What I did was I took what I heard from all the different council members in your individual meetings and found where there were commonalities both between what you wanted to see moving forward and making sure that there was kind of a theme from your prior ones. Because obviously you have a strategic plan and we don't want to just let that drop. So is this what you're thinking? So just like you heard your department heads and your city manager talk about working as a team, the council's a team too. And that starts by having shared values. Obviously, you guys have shared values because you all ran for public office. And so being able to adhere to those values and the standards and the ethics is really important. I always like to talk about the fact that we don't hear a lot about cities typically until things go wrong. And so it's up to us as leaders of our community to do things right, to set the tone for our city staff, for our city manager and for our community as a whole. If we're leading, you know, with integrity and doing things with our core values, that helps our community be a better community. So it was really nice to talk to each of you and learn about things that were important to you. And they really didn't hear or see that there are people working in silos, people working against each other. And that actually makes me really happy. Sometimes I get asked to talk to council members who do not speak to each other or do not like each other and that's always more difficult. So, you know, you don't always all get along. We all have different perspectives. That's what good governance is. I just ask that everybody agree to disagree civilly and politely, particularly when we're in public. We're lucky today, we don't have public here. But I do say that for our communities to hear that, that as leaders, we agree that we're just going to do the best to disagree politely. So you all know what these are and I appreciate that you live by these values. So in our council manager form of government, the goal of the council is to set the priorities and the goals of the city. And the job of the city manager and the staff is to make those happen. And so today, we're going to talk about those big goals. And then when the city manager and staff come back in the next month or two with the city budget, the annual budget and the work plan, she's going to give you that roadmap of how she gets into the weeds with this great team that you heard from earlier of how to get those things done. So you guys get to say, you know, we want to go this way. And she's going to say, well, here's the money we have so we can go that way. And this is how we're going to do it this year. And then do it again for the next year with your two-year plan. So that's kind of what we're doing. I took it upon myself to reorganize the way the buckets go because I'm type A and I like them alphabetical. So that's how we're going to talk about them today. So again, this is what the strategic plan that we'll be working on today will set forward. It helps us prioritize how much money we have and what we can get done with the dollars and the resources that we have. And resources can be just money and things and also the staff that we have. But you have plenty of police now, so. I want to tell you, we're probably the only city in California that is fully staffed right now. So I'm like very impressed. I really do. You know what? One moment, one moment, you're having. So I put community engagement and wellbeing. And again, so what I did, as the council knows, I meant to be to you. I heard what your priorities are. And so I tried to find and wordsmith those things to make sure that I'm getting what you tell is important. So community involvement seemed to be a running theme that I heard and making sure that your community is getting information and giving these lies information. I love that there was a survey done. That's a great way to get your community involved. You can continue to do those things to get them talking. So I know the city manager has some good ideas about that. Obviously focusing on the next generation and our youth and having programming for them. You have a great department that's doing that, so they'll continue to come forward with things. And then looking at joint use agreements with school districts. And this is something I see a lot of cities doing, particularly in these days of tightened budgets, of how to maximize the recreational space that we do have in our communities and working with other existing spaces is a great way to do that. I know in my prior city, we actually did have a public pool. So we partnered with the school district and that was our public pool. It was a great way to kind of take use of something that wasn't being used in off-hours. And then again, expanded communication and efforts. So, you know, I heard you, Councilmember Parker, talking about nobody knows we're doing these things. And so it's just this continual outreach that cities have to do. And again, you're not, you're very unique, but you're not unique with this problem. You could stand up and shout this stuff out and somebody would say, I didn't hear you. And so just being able to do that over and over and repeating it. And again, using you, all of you council members as spokespeople. You know, you are great. You know your community, you know your district. So you sharing that information, getting that from your city manager and sharing that out is another great way to do that. So I'm going to pause for a second and ask if anybody has any changes to these as priorities and goals? Anything you don't like? Anything you want to wordsmith? Anything you don't want your staff to do this year? Anybody need coffee?
I think not just specific for youth, but I think for all ages. Expand program for all ages.
Yeah, that's a good point, yeah.
Anybody have a objection to that? I heard you nodding. I'm going to change here if I go. Thumbs up, thumbs up, okay. Anybody else? Moving on? Okay.
So like, when, like, I just want to, may I change? Like, I just want to kind of like, because this is the first one and I want to make sure the council understands what we're, you know, like, what we're asking. This is like kind of a high level. So when you look at community engagement and wellbeing, that continues to be a goal of the council. How does that translate for you? And if we focus on these four bullets that are on the screen with the amended changes as proposed, is, does that feel like what you want to see happening in the next two years? And if that's yes, then we move on to the next one.
I have one. I think, I think all of these fall within what I'm about to say, which is accessible government. Right? So it's one thing for us to be out on social media distributing information. It's a whole different thing for us to bring the departments out to the community. And I would like to see a lot more of that. Whether it is, for example, our women's department, right? When it comes to increasing civic engagement, promoting the commissions, why aren't we in the farmers market? So I would like to see more of that. Like really taking our departments out to the community instead of having the community come to us. So I don't know how to wordsmith it, but I think that's one thing I would add.
Let's go to the bottom one, right, and outreach efforts.
I just kind of want to highlight that because I think we dump oil as far as expanding outreach efforts. But I feel we can do better in connecting, like truly connecting with those who we're serving.
So I would pitch that back to your city manager when she works on her work plan with her department and some fine, you know, ideas and solutions to that as one of the things. So I don't know if you want me to add that in as a goal or--
I'm taking notes. So that was basically my invitation, I mean, by that, while we want to make sure that those are your kind of over-artikel. But if there is any comments or things that are important to you that you also want to consider, Nick and I both have a PowerPoint presentation that we're typing notes. So we want to capture the ideas and, you know, what's important to you.
And what I would say is that that falls under the last bullet, expanding city communication outreach efforts. And how she does that is part of her work plan. But that's a very good point.
Thank you.
Yeah, and on that note, engagement, I mean, I've talked about this a little bit with the former school president about how, you know, we're with parks, we're working rather than doing agreements for park, for school usage. But how do we, you know, they're already getting emails. They're already getting cell phone numbers from the community. How can we work better with their communication teams so we can get our information also through them? Because I've--
Yeah, that was a win that I, none of us actually touched on. But I want to kind of like maybe inform you that we've worked with all the departments that have access to our own data. And for the first time in forever, we have now database with 11,000 emails and cell phone numbers of our residents, most of them through the voter registration list. So first time, we've never, we've always been thrown with a goal in mind. Like the executive team can tell you, I went about it in one of the executive meetings. We need a database of emails. We have it now. We actually used it unsuccessfully for the first time.
Well, successfully, but maybe they held so communicated, Ren, that they didn't feel like they needed to show up.
Yeah, but, but, but you know, like so many times, I mean, like Tommy thought of that. Like when it was COVID and we needed to communicate with our businesses and we had no emails, we stuffed envelopes in our room during COVID by ourselves for two days in a row. Like 4,000 envelopes, buying them. It was the only way we can communicate with our businesses. I was like, come on. So since then, we started collecting business emails. So that is an area where we have made a ton of progress.
Thanks for that information.
And maybe you can kill two birds with one stone by having the staff out at events collecting information so you're out there and you're getting the information you all need. But again, I think that's something that, you know, people's information changes all the time. So again, it's just this continual effort. But, and everybody was doing that during COVID. We were all scrambling to find our businesses. That was a great solution.
Yes.
All right, anything else on this?
One more point.
Sure.
I think this goes, again, is I think everything's sort of interconnected. But I think it starts with customer service to us at different departments. So if you have a very welcoming, friendly environment with amazing streamlined processes, that can only uplift, right, the CEO of Watsonville and our departments who do amazing work.
You said streamlined, right? Is that what you just heard? We're going to get to that, so hold that thought. But yes, you're right, it is, customer service is very important for sure. Anyone else? All right. I've heard a lot of economic development thoughts from you all. I really appreciated that and it was really great to see that in person today. So we talked about supporting existing local businesses. You've got your existing businesses. We want to keep them. We want them to be a staple part of this community. But we also want to attract new diversified businesses. I heard that for everybody, you know, without hesitation of the types of services we want. We want varieties, we want family-oriented businesses, you know, we want higher-end businesses, there's all different kinds. And so that's why you used the word diversified because I don't want to lock us into that. But definitely finding a way to attract new businesses. And then I know you have your downtown specific plan. And so engaging with existing property owners and hopefully customers to come and work on that downtown specific plan. So those were kind of the top three that I heard and we all talked about that a lot. But did anybody have any thoughts on this, changes, additions?
I have a question or a comment from this. So what happens with the businesses that we've been approving? I was thinking like the car rentals place on Freedom Boulevard. It sounds like, and from what you guys said today, there were 82 in planning, 1,006 building permits given. Where are all these, those businesses and stuff going? I'm really curious.
It's a combination of-- It's a combination of homes being remodeled and businesses. It's all that we're doing. It's not just businesses. So that's why I said, like, you know, that what constantly implanting...
Home as well.
So it's residential.
Residential.
So, but what happens, I do, I remember there was a softball pitching, a softball thing that was going to come in. We've approved a lot of stuff, but they don't ever come to fruition. You know, we have some people like on Main Street that haven't even built things that we've approved years ago. So I don't know, I kind of, I'm curious on what happens to all these, you know, businesses we're approving. But also, I mean, to go along with number three, how are we going to do that? Because, I mean, I feel like we've been talking about this for a while now and, you know, everyone's kind of sitting on their hands. And prices are now going up with wood and all these, everything, like tariffs, I mean, tariffs do go in. Like, I don't know, how it possibly is going to be, how are we going to be able to achieve this?
That, in my mind, that is the part of where I lifted up the idea of the downtown specific plan. That's how we do it. We lower the barriers in terms of like what the city can do. The rest is in private, private hands, right? So a couple of years ago, it was the cost of money. Money was very expensive. Like borrowing money to build was very expensive. So the, the, the reason why Bill Hanson was not building on Main Street is because he wasn't going to borrow at the interest rate that banks were lending, right? So then now interest rates are lower. Why is he not building? Your guess is as good as mine, but like cost is going up, right? So there's like for, for investors, for, for property owners, it needs to work, right? And that's the part that we as a city have no control over. What we can do is lower the barriers, uh, being...
It's offering incentives. That's really the only thing the city can do.
Which we'd never really done before. And I feel like we need to... So I just recently went to San Luis Obispo for a meeting and I think I talked to the mayor. And I'm like, "Well, what do you do with your businesses?" And she's like, "Oh, well, you know, businesses, we will transmit everything for them." They actively work with their businesses that they bring into their community. And I don't feel like we do any of that. I mean, I don't feel like we work with any of our businesses, you know? So we need to change that culture. I mean, we need, if we want businesses to come into Watsonville, we've got to start making partners with them.
Councilmember Clark?
Let's, I mean, just be absolutely clear about this. It, it's not just the cost of wood. I mean, that has a ton of part with it. I said this a million times, we have a terrible reputation. We need to streamline our processes. Our CDV did nothing but beat down local businesses for the longest time. And people are sick and tired of it. People don't want to come here and bring their money and invest in this community when there was so much favoritism. Yeah, when you see the director coming in, I hope he's able to right that ship. But there are some terrible things that have been going on in that department. And that is one of the biggest issues as to why Bill Hanson wasn't able to build for two years. And we all know this. Go through the emails. I mean, we've got a major issue in that department. And now it's super understaffed, which I'm not opposed to, because a lot of the people that are gone were the biggest problems. We really, really need to turn that ship around. We really want to be a part of that business community and be helpful, like Jimmy or Councilmember Deutro says. It, it, it's not about price. It's, it's about attitude and customer service, okay? We really need to be walking. We need to stop talking out of both sides of our mouths, which is both Watsonville and Free Use, saying we're business-friendly, come on in, we love you. And then the second someone comes and invests all this money into the community, you know, the building department just totally turns around and destroys them. You know, there are businesses that almost, that one business in particular in the industrial section, you know, they almost filed for bankruptcy because they couldn't open for almost a year because of the height of the fence. You know, that, that's just not helpful for anyone, right? I, I mean, just hearing about the prices of wood, that's just, that's not, yeah. We need to look within ourselves and we need to practice what we preach. Thank you.
So maybe part of the how for the city manager and the staff to come back is to be able to offer a business, more friendly business environment, and so that's something that she can put into her work plan and help things happen.
We need to follow through the book to say...
You know, one of the things too that might be a good thing for the work plan is the bandwidth and resources is to look at what other communities are doing in terms of offering incentives. So that can be part of the how. So this is the what we want to do. And then she's going to come back with some how. But I hear you and, you know, appreciate those comments. Thank you.
Anyone else?
As, as long as, I mean, we're just looking at an umbrella, right?
Yes. Is this what we want to do, the path we want to go? She's figuring out how to get the gas and the car to go.
So all these comments that we're making, you're kicking notes on to, okay.
And I am as well.
Yeah, no, I understand. But yes, so that, because a lot of that has to do with what Jimmy and Councilman Clark said is that support existing local businesses. It's across the board. And why is this, why is the community development here? Why are they here giving a, just out of curiosity?
Justin is out. His mother is in an accident.
Oh, okay.
There was someone else. And Matt has three little children and an elected wife that has a board meeting to attend and couldn't, couldn't shift. But Carlos is all ears and I'm all ears. And I told him that they will be well represented.
He got a deep bench.
You got a deep bench, yes.
Yeah, that's, oh, yeah, but hey, I'll take it. All right.
And you know, I think, I think it's important to acknowledge that it's everybody, right?
No, I, I get it, I get it.
It's the safety in the community that promotes, you know, like, so we're all listening and what are you...
But a lot of it is what the Councilman Clark was talking about is, is our culture when it comes to CDD. You know, we've had culture issues in other departments and everything else, and everybody seems to be overcoming that. They've had to do some drastic measures, you know, they've had to go through it. And, and that's okay, because I think that's moving forward. It's very positive under your leadership. But to make this happen, that, that's got to happen in that department. That's all my overall region. There you go.
All right. Anyone else?
I'll try and just from the internal side, kind of going back to what Rayvon says, like, it's, it's not always just one department isolated. And I think that going back decades and generations, CDD and Public Works has been a pinch point that has resulted in some of that reputation. So I don't put it on them completely because I think it's been internal process that is interdepartmental. And it has been a challenge. So I mean, I would love to, I'm excited to make this new guy. I'm very optimistic that we'll be able to get there. But I think that sometimes when you're disjointed internally, no matter who, which department it is, it reflects on how it's represented to developers and inconsistencies and just areas where we could do better with our reputation internally, which will reflect externally. So I'm optimistic, but I just want to, I mean, acknowledge that from the internal standpoint. We know that that's a struggle too with process improvements.
Wow, thank you for saying that. This really lived up something that is real. Yeah, that was trouble, so thank you. But I also want to know where we're at and the council to realize where we are. So under that old culture, we were fumbling, like, the reapproval, right, through coverage. We have model for the council, like what, how are we turning this shit around to be able to create a business-friendly environment that allows you as decision makers to kind of like, tell us what you want to see and us to implement that. I never told Bill Hanson, Bill Hanson, you can't build your coverage because our ordinance doesn't allow it. If you are interested in changing the ordinance, that's what we did. We had a study session. You gave us feedback. We took your feedback back. We created an ordinance that is reflective of your guidance. And we are a week away from approving the coverage. That's a new business. That is the way that you guide policy and the way that we are working together to implement it. So I just want to like, you know, like, you're talking about that change. That change is happening, like honoring the agreements, right? That makes me well-observing of nasty comments on the circuit. That is, that is, that is a demonstration that we, we want to be business-friendly and that we will follow our, you know, what we're going to lead up to our work, right? So I think, I think like I hear that, but I also want to acknowledge that in a very short time, we're making leaps of progress in supporting what's important to you.
I have other comments, sorry. So I, and I think too, for so long, economic, economic development was put in with CDD and it kind of got lost in there, you know? And I think now that they're separate, and I'm going to use prime examples, when the airport was in with, was it utilities? I can't remember.
Public Works.
Public Works, right? I see the great things that Rayvon has done now that the airport is out where it should be.
How do you go back to Public Works though?
I'll take that.
But I'm just saying that I see, you belong to be standalone, like you don't belong in Public Works. And so, and I think you've done a great job. So I'm hopeful that I'm going to see the same thing, that now that they're completely different, we're going to see that person here next time and we're going to, and it's going to start becoming a success. That's all I see. I'm hopeful. I don't know.
And this stuff takes time, you know, if we can shake it, then she's...
She's going to get a couple months. Don't look at me, look at that, look at me.
I think what I had picked up on...
It's just my face.
No, it's not just your face.
Coming in and being neutral here is that there's definitely a will from everybody to make this happen. And so that's kind of where it starts, is you all setting the guidelines and putting, this is the way we want to go. And the staff saying, now we're on board, we want to get there. So, and the patience is...
I have a simple grant before you launch, partner.
Just, oh, this isn't specific to economic development, but just engineering everyone. It sounds like we need like professional development opportunities and like more public facing roles. That sounds like something that we could probably use. So just wanted to note that for the record. For the details, if anyone... Yes, that was it. That's my comment.
You good? Anybody else? All right, well, everything is connected because we brought to have an efficient, high-performing government to do all the things that you all want to do. So modernizing and streamlining city services, and I wanted to shout out to IT. I always like to say, hey, you know, IT, nobody listens or cares about until it doesn't work. Then they really need IT. And that's all part of it, is, you know, continuing to stay with the times and having technology and programs and servers and all the things that make it work. And that's an investment. It's an investment in time and it's an investment in resources. But I think it's definitely something we see you all are headed in the right way with. So maybe we'll pause there. Was there anything we want to talk about, at least on that one first bullet? In terms of streamlining, the city manager has any comments on that?
I'm super excited, you know, having the, the team doing the work that is planned ahead. I mean, I just, I just know that it's not a one-man show. I mean, like Irwin touches a ton of these, our investment that through our CIP, you know, parking some dollars aside to really strengthen our ability to manage records to work, to modernize in the city. And, and you know, and Brendan has been just like, I cannot underscore what a wonderful addition in, in, you know, just, just having our laptops and allowing us to work, you know, wherever we go. Like, you know, we are becoming efficient by the minute. And it is that investment and that focus that the team has. So it's just, that is one area that I know we're all doing a little part. You know, HR just with the new testing tools and how we are streamlining our process and managing our records for into the future is just really, really exciting to see. And we're all working on that.
And it takes time to transition to that, you know, to go from an HR paper system. And I don't know whether you all do time sheets by paper or to automatically, you know, on computer. But those things, transitioning to those types of systems, it sounds so basic and simple. It's actually a huge lift for staff. City clerk, same things with records management, particularly when you have an older city and you have tens of thousands of pieces of paper that have to be digitized. That's just something that takes time. But once it's up and running and once you have those systems in place, you are more efficient because we're doing things faster. I did want to pause on your records, PRAs that you mentioned, just to give you guys in the city that I ran. We probably put out 10,000 to 20,000 records a month. And we're a smaller city than this, so you're doing great.
Well, that's because we're not, we know who's...
I was like, those numbers, we got this in the...
And do you think like also with AI, I went to a conference recently and I just, I mean, they are, it's, it's going to take a lot of these jobs and really take them to the next level. And so I think that, you know, these record requests and stuff like that, they won't even be dealing with you anymore. I mean, just AI is going to take care of it and generate everything. And so how do you see that? We'll just have our own city.
Wave of my favorite to answer that question.
That sounds so naive about it. No, AI has to be trained.
Why do you think, Brendan?
No, I'm telling you.
No, I know, I understand, but it still has to be trained.
So I, I mean, I, what? Oh, so I wish, I spoke to this company that I was at this last conference and they are an AI company for marketing. So basically, they do, they prepare all the press releases and everything, AI does. And so you basically need just one or two people in the department as the human, and then it runs everything by them. So, I mean, that's where it's...
I think government isn't going to be as fast in catching up with using AI as the private sector is, as really... Partly because, and I don't know if this is true in this city, but I go to cities and need a paper form that you have to fill out in order to do something. AI cannot help you fill out that paper form because AI can't find that form because it's sitting on someone's desk in box. So until government, I'm saying government as well, not just your city catches up with a lot of that, it's going to take some time for it to fully help us.
I feel a lot of stuff is online now.
No, I wasn't saying your city. I was taking that as an example, you know? So it has to have, everything has to be like that. But I, I'm not going to go down that rabbit hole.
I know, we're scared of it, but...
I know, just so library girls have a comment.
I wonder how much of the things we just said, that in order for this to be modernized and streamlined, the key word is resources. If we don't have the funds to support this modernized city government, we're not going to get that. So that was one of my things when I came on board is why they're going to move all, everything to the cloud. It took time, it took money, but that's worth it.
Right. And that's the city manager's challenge and, you know, finance to roll this out in a doable way with your city budget. So we may say our goal is to have everything streamlined. Well, that may be a three-year process or a five-year process. If you have to scan every single city resolution, sorry, I don't know whether you've done that or not. Because I'm not throwing it at you yet. But you know what I mean? These things just take time. They really do. So rolling it out in a practical manner that you have the resources, and it takes staff time too. So implementing your classification study, I know that that was a lot that came up when I spoke to everybody. So making sure that you have the right classifications for the employees that you're trying to attract. And improving customer service, something we can always do better, always have a smile on our face. Thanks for visiting Watsonville, all that good stuff. So are the ones for this category, anybody have any changes?
So you can drop off the other...
Councilmember Montesina?
Drop off the other customer service engagement for the audience. It's just drop.
Well, we didn't really have anything that was specifically customer service. It was community involvement and maybe outreach efforts, communication outreach efforts. Is that what you're talking about?
No.
The other one wasn't. We didn't add, we didn't add that as a goal. That was just part of the work plan. Go ahead.
I'd just like to make a comment recently. I, I'm a public member, but I, at all times, I'm either calling the departments for myself or people or dropping in. And the departments, most of it, I got to tell you, suck. Customer service wise, the only one that actually has gone really good is the library. Recently called the library and the person that answered was very helpful. Got to, but I've got the works, got to just about every single department, whether in the call or in person. People don't know me, so I get the shittiest service.
So you're like our secret shopper with this one. Maybe, maybe they do know you and ask about you.
So, so the funny thing is, and I prefer when people don't know me, that's not on.
That's true, yeah. That's another one.
And, and, but there are times where, and this is why I don't bring in about the phones, right? Because there are times where, like, I'm doing like six different tasks, and I need the answer to something, and it's like, I'll just make a quick phone call, right? And then I'm on, you know, the phone for five minutes or ten minutes, and nobody's picking up, or we can't hear each other on either end or whatever, there are times, like, I just throw everything to the ground, got in my car, went to the city, just to talk to someone, because you can't even get through to anybody, right? Sorry, Brandon. But then the problem, the problem has gotten better, but I mean, it's just like madly, right? And it's like, I'm a council member, and I'm just trying to, like, obtain a little bit of information for, you know, constituents or something like that. Imagine, you know, if I wasn't a council member, you know, and I guess my first time dealing with the city, it's like, hey, I've got water leak or something like that, and I'm not trying to throw a public works out of the-
That's alright.
Yeah, because it's everywhere. I never call the library, so I can't say anything.
Everyone else is in the library.
Yeah, the library's so far. You know, it's like, if this is my first experience, I'm gonna be like, dude, the city totally sucks, you know? It's like, they, they don't even, they can't even answer their phones or whatever.
Okay, so I know that your city manager is hearing this loudly clear, I'm hearing it loud and clear, we will continue to talk after this meeting, and I will help her make sure that that's something she's addressing. It hasn't been around. I, I hear you, and you don't, we don't think that.
Yeah. The employees are awesome, just give them a home run.
No, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, I, I see it.
Oh, okay, sorry, I was trying to cut you off, but-
No, no, no.
When it comes to customer service, I think the other thing that I would love to see as part of improvement is updating our website. I think there's lots of information there, it just takes some while to point it, and it's all kind of stuff.
Yeah.
It's like all over the place. So that would be great to have. Yeah, it would, it would take money, but I think it would be worth the investment. A lot of people rely on technology nowadays, and if you can't get it there, then you have to make it dry. Right, it just, I think it stays there in one time.
So, I would hope, you know, when you look at your budget in the next month or two, that that, you can look at how much you have for updating and streamlining and modernizing, and make some decisions to prioritize, is it records, you know, retention, is it website, is it GIS? Or is it a robot to run it?
And if I just add one last thing, since we're talking about improving customer service, I think they touched on some of the concerns that I have, but I think, you know, as, as we go through this exercise and kind of begin brainstorming, I think one of the things that we have to keep in mind is also ensuring that the availability of our staff aligns with the availability of those trying to reach us. Meaning, for example, we have a working community, and sometimes parents, as a parent, you know, or not have the flexibility, but I know when I was working at UC Santa Cruz, I wouldn't be able to make it to, I don't know, Parkton, right, for example, to buy a 5:00 PM to ask a question, or whatever it may be, right? So it's, it's really, I think, that balance, finding that balance of providing, you know, service hours or in certain times, but also other times, maybe evening times or weekend times, just for more accessibility.
So I'm sure that's something your city manager can look at, and I, you know, cities do this in all different ways. Some people open at seven, I've heard some cities that one week, you know, a month, they stay open late two nights a week, two of those days, or something. There's ways of accommodating your community, particularly working, there's a lot of working people.
Councilmember Clark?
I also want to acknowledge the frustration on the staff end as well, because they are also working with antiquated systems. And that is something that, you know, we talked about in the background, and that I'm very much like, you know, let's fund this, right? We need to start upgrading our systems. But that's another thing that I run into, I don't know if you have, you know, funds, it now's happened, like, okay, I've got four different turnouts here, it's all the same thing, but I got different, you know, inputs, right? You know, and it's like, our, our systems are just so antiquated, it's like, it depends on what, where the sun is positioned in the sky sometimes, you know, the answer that you get, or if you're able to even use your systems in your department. So I just want to acknowledge that staff also struggle with this stuff, too.
Councilmember, do you try?
Thank you. So, I, I appreciate this, because I do get a lot of comments from the community about customer service and not having great customer service from the city, a lot of times being, getting the runaround. And specifically, when it comes to permitting, people feel that they're just not getting the information that's needed of them to get, accomplish whatever they're trying to do, it's very frustrating to them. They, you know, they, they feel that sometimes maybe the people that are, they're working to, you know, provide them a service, aren't well-informed in that area enough to get them what they need. So, I also think that whoever's in those positions needs to be educated on what they're doing, because I do hear that people feel like they get the runaround a lot. I also wanted to say that I did have this conversation with the Mada a while ago, because I do, I personally went to the city, is it the recycling center, is that what it would be called? And I was surprised on the hours, and I'm like, people work, who's gonna get there before 3:00 o'clock?
And we talked about that a lot.
You know, and I hope those have changed already, because I did bring that up a while ago.
Weird, we've talked about it.
But that needs to go back to times where people, we can't sit here and think we're so privileged that, you know, that only certain amount of people are gonna be able to access that, and if you don't get there by 3:00 o'clock, you're not gonna have that opportunity. So, I know the times were changed, I saw a sticker with time, so time at once been longer, had been opened longer. So, I do agree with kind of what the mayor was saying, and with people that, we have to remember that a lot of our community members are working people, and if our service is closed at 5:00 o'clock, they're not gonna get to them. And they're definitely not gonna get to them if they close at 3:00. So, I think that all should be a little like you about, and then, you know, the permitting as well.
I know, we had a question over here, right, I'm gonna say one thought that I just had, which is, when people get good service, they normally don't say anything. They tend to go to the manager when something was bad with the restaurant, right? We all do that, you know, I'm human, you know, so let's remember that, that you may just be hearing a lot of the bad, and then when someone did get, hopefully, some good service when they called, they didn't bother to go and knock on your door and say, you know what, I called the city today, and, you know, Joe was really sweet, like, so.
Well, the fact that we're getting a lot of bad, that's-
I, I hear you, I'm not saying it does not exist, I was just trying to-
You know, that's an excellent point, you're right, we've been doing the mayor on the move, and we've been talking to businesses, and we're getting some great feedback on the service that they've been getting from staff. So that was nice to see, so I know it's not all bad, and I kind of do want to acknowledge the fact that I think staff are working very hard to their capacity, and we might just need more resources, but I do want to acknowledge that there is good things happening, and we are also hearing that from the community. And we just wanna continue to-
Well, we're good, we're getting better, that's what the goal is. And, and in my experience, most people don't go into local government and become public servants because they're bad people and they don't want to help people. They're actually quite the opposite, and so generally speaking, you're working with pretty good people. Just great, this is crazy. We need more people in this city hall. Did we have a comment? Who made that comment? Yes, sir.
So, I kind of struggle with the customer service piece, not because it's a bad thing, but because who is the customer? And I was just asking, guys, who is your customer? Is it just the people on the exterior, or is it the people on the interior of your building that you have to take care of in order so that they can take care of the people outside? So, our, our customers are our own staff, is it the other department heads? I think we need to kind of reframe how we think about the customer, because the customer is also each other, the customer is also our employees. And if we don't take care of them, they are not gonna take care of the people in the exterior. So, I think we need to, I mean, I, it's just my opinion, I think we need to reshift and retool how we think about the customer, because it isn't just the people come into our counter.
I appreciate that, and that was why I started today with leadership at the top, and how we behave, and how we are models and, you know, examples for the community, so saving for staff, so thank you. I bet people don't like it when they get tickets, though. Do you want to, great, for dinner, you guys wanna keep going, whatever, whatever you want to go away?
Can I add something to that, please? For the customer service and the modernization and streamlining, you know, a lot of the core modernization that has to be changed, like you said at the beginning, right? And, you know, when we're looking at, maybe not AI, but definitely automation, things that we could do to, you know, capture either customer interactions in a way that is more data-fed and less them feeling like they're on hold, which is kind of like an old dated system, where you can talk to a person. But then also the expectations, we have to match what we're able to do with what we want that experience for customer service to look like and feel like for the person. So I mean, with your example of the PTO, of course we could expand the hours, but then I would need either double the staff, or we're opening way later to accommodate the later, and then those people will be mad that we're not open in the morning anymore, like, there's no way to satisfy everybody unless we're open 24/7, we don't have the resources. So I mean, when we're looking at things like data-driven decisions, we just need to understand what the balance of that is. If we go to move that, what's the ripple effect for everybody else, like you said, that was quiet, because they were enjoying the service or whatever? So it's, when we look at improving, it's, maybe it's more like evolving customer service or something, I'm not sure, but I, you know, I do-
I'll let you work that out with the city manager.
Yeah, thank you.
I have one, too. And this is to the, to the mayor, and to the council members, and to my peers here. If there's ever a time that you're at the airport and there's customer service that doesn't meet your standards, I would just ask, I always keep the door open, just come and tell me. And I tell this to every tenant on the field, and when something goes good and they point out a good employee, I say, don't tell me, tell tomorrow. Send it up to the city manager.
Yeah.
So if there's a problem, right, that's what you pay me for. I'm not running away from anything. We work hard at the airport, and we have some of the most difficult customers, as I'm sure you've met. And they have, they have come to the city manager with petitions, the fire raids. They have met with the city manager and said, this guy doesn't know what he's doing. So, I'm not afraid of issues, but what I am afraid of is a problem happens and I don't have an opportunity to address it.
Okay, Mayor, did you want to break for dinner, or do you wanna keep going?
We, we wanna wrap this up.
Okay, alright.
So, maybe five more minutes on this, if that's what we need.
Anybody have anything else to discuss? I'm in the council.
I just want to, really quick, I was saying-
The council does-
I want to, I want to, I've never heard a problem from your, from the air, about that, you know? So, and I, so, yeah, and I, now that I'm really thinking about it, I haven't heard from a lot of departments, either police, either, or fire, it mostly was, you know, CDD in, in that department, who isn't here today, right? So, that, I mean, that just shows that there's a lot of, who? Well, Carlos is different. Carlos is- I'm not gonna aim it at Carlos, because I'm not sure.
Put Carlos in that business.
I don't even know Carlos, and I like him now.
You did that on purpose.
But, but your city manager is here, so if you don't have a department head here, your city manager is here, it sounds like that.
But I'm just saying that, like, I know, I don't want other departments to feel like, oh, we're all ganging up on you, because I think there are departments that I've never been paid about, so.
I think, I think getting people to have the right attitude when they answer the phone or interact with members of the public, in person or on the phone or an email, it's a certain standard, and I will help the city manager figure a path out for them.
I think, I think one of the things that I always acknowledge about CDD, and I would have this conversation at everyone on one with Susie, I said, Susie, your department touches people, but it hurts the most, right? I always tell her that, I say, like, Susie, you're not, like, affecting my kid going to play soccer. It's my pocket, and that hurts, right? So people that are, you know, like, you hear a lot of complaints when people that are trying to invest their, their money, whether they have a lot or a little, it's, it's, it's a really, it's a department where they kill dreams. They tell people, no, you cannot build your three-story high-
That I can't help with, killing the dreams.
Like, they, they kill dreams, that's what they do, because they have to follow the rules that are set for the city. They, it's, you know, like, the filter we need to allow CDD to be able to have, because, you know, there are many customers, just thank you, Mayor, for saying the feedback that we've been hearing, and Mayor, the move. Like, a lot of people are very happy with the service they receive. You're hearing from those few that were impacted or were simply not allowed to do what they wanted to do. Like, and you know what? Most of the time, it's a storm-rained issue that Courtney's team, behind these things, three doors down, is telling them no, and it's poor CDD, the planner, who is facing a member of the public, telling them that, that, that story. So you, we need to acknowledge that, like, our CDD team is in a very, very difficult position. Can we improve? Can we do better? We, we're doing great, and we can always do better. But I just wanna, like, really lift up that the team is also a small team and very service-oriented. So, so, I know we don't always agree, and you hear from different people in the community, and, you know, I just wanna kind of put that out there.
Okay, anything else on this subject?
Nope.
From the government, from the council? Okay, so we're gonna stop, let you all grab some food, take like ten minutes to get situated again, and pick it back up over dinner.
We're going to move on, there's a couple of council members here, yes?
Fiscal help, obviously super important for our city. I think kind of goes without saying that we want to have long-term fiscal stability. I know you can have a really good investment policy, but I think it's always very prudent to have it as a goal, the council, to make sure that we're looking long-term and setting up our city and our finances for kind of the next generation. Things like pensions and liabilities and all those horrible things do take its toll down the road, so making sure we're looking at that. Having a balanced budget, obviously you have to have a balanced budget, but that's also a great goal. And then looking at different ways to get new revenue in and being creative with that, whether it's bringing in grants or looking at other revenue sources. And so these were the things that I kind of hoped that we heard from you all, and I'd love to hear if you have any other thoughts, span, remove, change, these.
Hasn't the city thought about how they're gonna bring in new revenue?
Oh, no, that's not my job, I don't have to help you figure that out, that's what your staff is for. So I think, you know, setting that as a strategic plan goal gives your city manager and staff the ability to then, in their work plan, look at different ways to do that and come up with some ideas that could, again, I just said grant writing as an example, or grant, seeking out grants. But looking at different ways to, to do that, and I don't know if your city manager wants to add on that.
So, I'm just revisiting this in my head. We're looking at this and just to see that the umbrella is there, and if we make individual comments, is that what you're looking for, so they can take notes on it?
Yes, exactly. Or, or, I don't wanna do that, I wanna do that, or I wanna add another big umbrella up there.
But your ideas will help the team, that's why, like, it's important, you know, say, your team is listening, is what is important for you, and how do we build a work plan that supports your goals? So the umbrella is really where we want you to give us direction, and then we'll take it from there, right? We, we do, we are having active conversations about, like, creative ways of generating new revenue. Maybe, maybe streamlining this revenue that we're currently receiving, and how we adjust fees, and how we code it so that we, that we're more efficient in how we bring revenue from development. So we are already having these conversations, so if that is a goal, it will fit right in on what that Marissa and I are already trying to do.
So an example, too, there, under that goal of generating new revenue in the work plan and part of the budget, one of the items for the year could be conduct an audit of certain revenue sources, that could be implementing that goal.
So, I, you know, one of, one of the things that has, I know recently, Gata Vallarta- I know recently Gata Vallarta, in there, we're going to do sort of bar incorporated and can get, and that's, you know, to me, the realizing factor that, you know, years ago, the county along with the city made a moratorium for alcohol license, but they didn't see the future. And I just talked to actually an older council member. I said, "This is what you guys did. You didn't look at towards the future." And unintended consequences, we could have only six liquor licenses, full liquor licenses. If somebody wants to get another one for another restaurant, it's, it's unattainable because it's, you know, they have to transfer one in and a cost factor of about, about $200,000.
Is this a county policy or a city policy?
It's a state.
It's a state moratorium on our county. But it really reflects an inequity in, in our ability to provide entertaining venues in, in Wattemo. Santa Cruz has three times more liquor license than we are allowed to have. But then, creating a moratorium created like this black market, right? Like, where you either you go buy it for a lot of money and your stuff, but you still be able to have it. But, but it's, it's unfeasible financially.
So, an action item on that goal could be for the city manager to come up with, oh, you know, a ad hoc committee of the council to lobby your state legislators on that issue. So, that would be an example. That's the goal. That, that's the action item.
I do agree with what Eduardo just said because, um, you know, I've been talking with these owners and they're like, I mean, they want a food, it's a food and liquor license and they can't even get it. I mean, so I was thinking, well, this is down to the strategic plan. How are we going to get any restaurant? Yeah.
All right, the vision of what we would like.
The vision of what we want is not a table.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds like y'all be in Sacramento a little bit.
Why, that's not, restaurants depend on the full bar.
And, and the other thing that, you know, this is just a thought. It's like, I think we got to stop thinking about, you know, uh, you know, the pandemic did a lot of things, but it also accelerated our path to online shopping. You know, now if you see everywhere in your, in our communities, truck, you know, whether it's the UPS, you know, Amazon, hey, truck, 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 dropping and dropping stuff up. So, the, the thinking behind, like, we're going to get a brick and mortar stuff? We got to, we got, I don't know, I, it's, to me, it's an odd question. What is that again? Because unless it's a special pizza, I just don't see, you know, a Tozeras or whatever, you know. That's an example, you know. Um, so, what, what are we attracting? So, we also got to start defining about, hey, if we go, uh, look at something, what is it that we're looking for? Because there's only so many things now, nowadays.
Luckily, we finished all your economic development buckets. We're moved on.
But even Capital Mall, right? I mean, those stores are closing left and right. It's, it's, it's a desert in there. So, if that's not going to succeed, it's not coming to lots of people looks. Like, that's, I mean, like you said.
Retail is challenged.
Our streets all day long, our Amazon trucks, UPS trucks. I mean, people are just buying online. That's it.
But it's the experience.
Hey, Mayor, um, so for item two, um, I would like to add, if it's okay with council, um, something about like maintaining, also maintaining, uh, future positive reserve balances. Does that tend to come with a lot? And that's something that I want to make sure, like, we don't run out of money. We're not, um, any questions?
Sorry, I don't have to answer to this.
Budget and reserves.
Yeah. Do you have a reserve policy?
Please do.
Okay. And I agree, that's a very good one, particularly because I have fire and police in the room and we just never know what's going to go wrong in terms of disasters or those types of things. So, it's very prudent to do that, for sure.
I just like your laws right before that. So, uh, going back to the brick and mortar and everything else, the problem is, and it is about liquor licenses to a certain extent, but not all of it. It's, the only thing we can provide is experiences. That's something people will buy. That's something people can't get just by going online. They probably couldn't, not the stuff itself. So, the idea is, you know, escape rooms, uh, family oriented, then restaurants, you know, uh, all, all these different things that could be. And, uh, and liquor, you know, also has it. But we also have, um, a community of nonprofits that are very anti liquor at the same time. I know this because they, they seriously labored at the, you know, over my district to not allow that. But heck, you can get it anywhere except for Watsonville. So, you know, that's, that, I don't want to tell adults what not to do when it comes to drinking. And I don't want to see a whole bunch of bars like it was, you know, with my mom and my aunt. Everybody's grown up on Watson, you know, mainstream. So, experiences we can, but we do need to explore that. How to experience for our city. I mean, I think it's detrimental to the actual, I mean, Tamara, who we are as a city, just like the levy and, and property values and who we are. I think that's the same kind of argument.
I want to take you back from council member Parker. I do agree on that. Having conversations with other people in other cities, they are moving towards experience-based businesses. So, we have to move with them. And that is, that is just the future. Because the brick and mortar is no longer going to ever come back. I've been trying to say that to people too, just kind of like, because I think if we give them hope that brick and mortar is coming back, it doesn't do us any justice because it's not coming back. So, I think we need to be like, just say, "We're moving towards a new, you know, experiences, restaurants." But then again, we got to make it easier for them because they can't even get licenses. So, um, so that was the one thing. And the other thing was, I forgot, I'll come back to that.
So, I have a comment on retaining balanced budget. I just want to make sure that, well, a lot of it is consumed by, um, staff, right? And so forth, benefits. But I want to make sure that at least every year we have months set aside specifically for council priorities, whatever those may be, so prioritizing, uh, that when we're looking at budget and making those decisions.
Do you know what that means? You're good on that?
I'm getting that depending on how we do on time. It is a good, like, maybe at the end, if we can maybe have a conversation and if I can get a little bit of direction. Because as we build the budget, you know, like, if your priority is to buy M&amp;Ms for children in our community that has one price tag, or if your priority is to buy a catat for your children, that is, you know, in my idea priority, but it has a different budget impact. So, I want to understand a little bit more what's behind that.
Sure. And part of the, the reason of doing a strategic plan like this is, again, these are your big issues that you guys want to have your city manager and city staff focus on. And then when they bring the budget up, that's a great time to have this discussion about, well, I see that you put in, you know, the baseline things we have to have. We have to have our staffing, our insurance, our, you know, all the things we have to pay for, rent, electricity, et cetera. And then what is left to do what with? And so, perhaps the first version of the budget that you see the city manager has put X amount of money into this project and you want this other project, then that's the perfect time for you guys to say, "Well, our priority is this other project and we want to move." So, remember, that's your opportunity to talk about that.
And I think the other thing I would say, just sort of maximizing grant opportunities. I know, again, I think it goes back to staffing levels. But I know that there are spokes out there willing to learn again. I think we learned that through the RTC and money that was left on the table that we could have benefited from. So, just exploring those, those partnerships. If we can do it internally.
Did you want to add that under, or explore that? Any ways to generate new revenue and maximize grant opportunities? Is that something you want to add?
Sure.
We partnerships with local.
Yeah.
Yes, everybody, yes? Do you have a consensus?
Sure, council member.
Oh, I, I, so, I know, and I, I, we had this conversation earlier about parking enforcement. I know that we, um, have two empty positions. We had this conversation. Can I share what we talked about?
Yeah.
Okay. And, um, you know, I hear a lot back from the city, like, "Well, we don't have enough funding for those positions, so we can't send people out to parking enforcement." Um, you know, and she was a city manager of a city and has seen a lot of insight. And one of the biggest ways to address that issue for our conversation was having the reserve police department.
No, sir. We were a contact city, so we had, uh, sheriff's department or our law enforcement and we had a volunteers on patrol program. And we actually allowed them to issue parking enforcement. So, we brought them ticket writers and had them do it. And it worked really well. I don't know if that even exists yet, but I just.
Do you have volunteers in our police department?
We, we used to have a forum of that with our volunteer community service officers. They were able to go out and take reports. We do all, something you're talking about. We don't have that anymore. And I, I think for us, depending on the types of volunteers that you have, it can be a little shocking, right? Because they're not always going to be there.
True.
You can't force them to come in. So, it can be a little challenging, but it can work. Just if you have the right people.
I think that's something we can look into because it can really help in that place. Because right now, we have zero.
He said he was going to bring this up and not say it was my idea. So, now that it doesn't go wrong.
I had to share that.
I know. You told me.
No, but I just think that, I mean, we got to think outside of the box.
When it's shoddy, it was really his fault.
I know. But I think we need to think outside of the box when we're trying to address some of these issues because our budget's not always going to be able to meet the needs of those positions. So, when we had this conversation, and I know this is probably for most of us on the city council, you know, who want, who hear from our constituents, "Why aren't those cars moving? Why can't they clean the sides of the streets?" You know, like, I know this is for me and Ari at least, you know. Probably hear that a lot. And we have very similar districts and, um, let's see.
I even brought in District 7. Lots of volunteers in District 7.
I was going to say, there's a lot retired.
But there's nuances to that, right? There's, there's legal issues, there's training, there's, I mean, parking, we do the parking enforcement, it's one of the toughest jobs in the police department. You're giving people a ticket, you don't want to be ticketed, you know? And they think that the sidewalk is, or the street is their property.
I'm going to tell you, teachers are great with that.
Yeah, but I'm just saying.
We're used to delivering information people do not want to hear. So, it's okay.
Anyway, I think it falls under being creative. And that may not be the solution for this community, but there are different ways of looking at things. And so, you know, what I would encourage you as a council is to see what other communities are doing. You know, go to the League of Cities conferences and listen to what other people, talk to your peers and your colleagues and see. Because lots of people are thinking about this. So, again, that was just one idea and it, it may not fit.
And you're correct. I mean, the, the new, the League of Cities is happening next week. I saw the list. They actually, homelessness is one of them. You should, I mean, you should be going to these things and really learning how to address these issues. So, Eduardo's going to represent us next week.
Really? Glad to hear that. Well, I'm on two panels, so I better see you in my session.
You hear that, Eduardo? She's having a.
I'm on two panels, so I'm.
Oh, there you go.
Okay. Anybody else? Anything? Did we miss anything?
I have one, but I don't know how to phrase it in a way that's.
Not very. Just go for it, man.
Let's see. Let's not sit on money, right? If we have money allocated for certain projects, we need to be planning ahead to ensure that we're able to deliver on those projects. Because when we delay the planning process, it gets more expensive to do things. So, I don't know how to phrase it, but, I mean.
That goes, that goes under long-term fiscal.
Your mom.
And it's the only thing, right? And it's, it's not just, you know, staffing levels. It's certain things that have been done in the past, like at PLA. I know that Courtney's working on that. That, that has, unfortunately, when it comes to certain projects, kind of, you know, impacted us. But, yeah, just looking ahead.
Well, I think that goes under both the first one and then the second one that you also amended about having reserve balances. So, I think we've got that, feel good about that.
Cool.
Just remember.
Sure.
Um, I have, you know, I, I was talking, you can remind me this conversation, Tamara, about this store trains that we, that we can't fund. You know, we need to put that to the, to the voters.
She's waiting on it.
I, we, we just can't, you know, we have a lot of needs. We can defer and defer and defer. You know, you know, and it's just costly by, by deferring all these, all these.
Courtney is exploring that. I mean, also is exploring it under the umbrella on like, creating a fund or a revenue, how that can also help us address a little bit of our homeless management issues and provide funding for storm drain maintenance and maintaining those water channels that are so impactful. So, that's for.
And also, it's not popular, you know, we fight this every time we, we go to intellivates that it should be coming up soon. And we need to put more percentages. I know we're the lowest cost and we pride ourselves on being deep and, but we cannot continue on this path because we don't invest. And we know, infrastructure is a fun part.
But some of the funds are really hot. We have a lot of money in some of them. We don't need to.
We need to use them.
We can't. We only can use them on certain things.
Like I said, we got to figure out a way we work credibly to spend those funds, get the other funds, you know, invest, invest, invest.
Yeah, no, I get it. I, I get it, but, you know, my senior area, that hits so hard. And we, I voted for it the last time. We had a major raise, you know, and some people on council did not vote for it. And that's problematic because it's for the same, I mean, we're still two sides of the same coin of how difficult it is. And the, the circumstances are, so I hear you, what you're saying, because previous councils did diddly squat. And they just kept, "Oh, look up to the future." You know, it's not, it's not good for us right now. And, and so, we've been very respectful of the fact that, yes, we've had to do increases. But I, you know.
So, I think getting that long-term fiscal.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of, yeah, there's a lot of components to it, yeah.
All right, I mean, good on this section.
I just want to comment. I just want to, this is, this is important though. I just want to say, I wanted to say congratulations to our city though because we, our budget, we're not coming back this budget cycle and being stressed out. Like, that's, I've hearing from other people in other communities that are really. The next one.
Oh, just wait.
Today. You're stressed out, we're good. You don't need to back.
She's doing a good job.
Yeah, she is.
But her past one, we were pretty good, right? And so, it sounds like maybe not so much in the next one?
Well, no, the thing is like, we, we, like, you know, when we didn't be here, we really wanted to be okay. And we wrapped the year okay because we made the hard decisions in advance.
Yeah.
So, we're going to continue to sort of bring those up, acknowledge those opportunities exist, to make difficult decisions to allow us to maintain a balanced budget. That's our commitment. We are committed to that.
Okay, move on before he says anything.
I move on.
Thank you. Take the win when you can. Okay, housing, encourage stock of used developments, increase housing options for all sectors, and encourage the development of ADUs without impacting. Feel like that could be done tomorrow. Easy peasy.
Yeah. I'm going to park the issue.
Uh, well, yeah, those are the, those are the big ones, but it drives me a little bit nuts, the third one.
Yeah.
Because.
It's impossible.
It is impossible. And it's even further impossible that the state keeps imposing things and doesn't let us make, I mean, how can we minimize the impact to neighborhood when they don't let us, they don't let us have anything to say about it? They, and, and it's problematic at the same time. So I don't know. That works as umbrellas, but unless.
And you're not the only community.
Yeah, no, I get that.
It's really, it's tough. Very, very tough.
Yeah, I mean, they've taken away our local control for judgment when it comes to housing issues of the ADUs. You know, it's not that we don't need them. It just changes, because we're 6.2 square miles, it just changes the whole, you know, environment of our city.
Big one.
That's it. So we're not paving the hills with the long rolling, you know, yards with multiple ADUs in there, so it's just.
How's that with the draft?
Uh, okay, yeah, so I was surprised at this thousand number five in our survey. And I can kind of see why I think people are seeing all the new development coming in. I mean, on Miles and Atkinson Lane, I've taken more, more housing in my district than probably any other person I would imagine. I mean, I have at least three new developments on Atkinson Lane alone. So I think people see all this new development coming in. Are we able to meet the resources with water, through our fire, through our police? I mean, these are concerns I think people are starting to have. And, and also I'm hearing, what about, I don't know, the middle class? Like, what, why can't we buy houses? Why aren't there opportunities for us? So I really think that we need to start, you know, it was this increasing housing options for all sectors of the community. I think we've done a real good job with the low, you know, the low income. The people who are, who are on working wages, we have forgotten about them. And.
So I think that grabs that, all sectors.
No, I understand, but I am just letting you know that that's how I feel about this issue.
Got it.
Because I feel that, like, we are, people are living in Los Banios to come teach in, you know, Watsonville. People are living in Los Banios to come work. I mean, that should not be the case. These people should be living in our community, you know? So we're building a new metro house, we're doing metro housing in Metro. I brought it up. I said, our employees should be the first in line for this, you know? Because, I mean, I'm sure a lot of these employees are being forced to live far from our communities. And so to me, workforce force, workforce.
Workforce.
Workforce housing should be a priority.
Got it. And middle-class housing. I agree with you. But I agree that, that touches base on all the umbrella, you know?
Any other thoughts? No thoughts?
No, I can't get into it right now.
Tell the state to stay.
Well, no, I mean, we're, we're, we're sitting here talking about, like, what about the middle class? We, we got like the low-income good, but that affects, it's, it's a domino effect. We recently discussed the low-income housing rates here in Watson, right? We set them, okay? We set them too low. We set them on numbers that really aren't real, but it is helpful to our community. But then when you have a developer that comes in, this goes back to the developer issue, where it's like, that piece of plywood costs the same whether it's for a low-income unit or a regular-priced unit. And then city staff go, oh, well, you know what? If they're losing money on the low-income units, they can just charge more for the regular rate units. And that's why the middle class can't afford housing here. And this body just voted for that. So you got to think about the future. You got to think about the things that you're doing and have an understanding of how it works. And that, that's why I'm standing and shaking my head. Because we just shot ourselves in the foot.
Good point, Casey.
Thank you. When I keep my mouth shut, don't encourage me to open it.
Anybody else?
But what are we going to do? What are we going to do?
I'll tell you why to do it.
Yeah.
You know, the general plan is coming to you in a few months. And the general plan identifies areas of future growth for Watsonville. So I really want to encourage the council to sit and dive in with us in understanding what that means. Because we recently have voters renew our urban unitized. And when we are limited in how we can grow, the only way we can grow is in ADUs or our downtown infill. You know, that, that's it. That's it for us. There's no other opportunities, right? Like, perhaps Hillcrest, that you were just so eloquently speaking about, it's our last development that we, that we can have in our city based on what the land we have. So I think the opportunity for Watsonville is really looking at 2030, really championing the understanding in our community that annexing is, is creating that opportunity for, for more middle-class, single-family homes that otherwise we can never have.
The PSL survey said they don't want more housing.
People on the, people on the survey, well, you know, God knows what those people think, but people are really speaking about the negative impact of ADUs in neighborhoods, particularly in District 2 and District 1, where parking, as we know it, is so incredibly impacted. So now you've got another unit behind a unit that already has no parking, that is going to make some really funny movement dynamics.
So it sounds like your general plan is coming back to you to look at some of these really difficult issues that everybody in California is facing, unfortunately.
And it's for the council to go with the community to understand that changing the urban limit and the jumping that that does for development, that's our opportunity. That is, that is what we can do.
Any other changes?
Yep.
So addressing the infrastructure and facilities, and I heard someone mention that in regards to housing, they're making sure that we have the right infrastructure. We're building more, completing installation and upgrades for lighting throughout the city. I heard that from a lot of you about the safety issues, so upgrading lighting and maintaining it. And if it helps with that safety, and then making sure that any kind of improvements that we are doing are being done in an equal way throughout everybody's district. That was something you all kind of said in different ways to me. So that's what we're talking about. Does anybody have any changes? Hopefully, all of works is like, yeah, I think you have a good description. No problem.
We feel pretty good.
I have to say, as an outsider coming into your town today, things look really good. I have to say.
Look closer.
Yeah.
Really, I look very closely.
No, no, I think maybe it's our high-scape.
One, this is not even popular, but I'm just going to say it. Phasing out fireworks, if they can, the interest of our environment, that's something that we're going to have to do at some point. So we just encourage council to start thinking about strategically how we can do that without making everybody really mad because they're going to do that. But I feel like, well, it needs to be done, so.
A lot of comments just support that for my district.
You have a reaction.
Not for mine.
No, no. I love the fireworks.
Talk about.
My alarm balloons or something?
Oh, the balloons. All the balloons is what they wanted to be. Did you know there was a clown in here? Were they ever good on these?
No.
Yeah. One over there.
What about spondies or measure bar or a mystery?
That's coming. It's already on your agenda today. Today is on your agenda. The step one for doing that is on today's concept. See?
Done. All right, public safety. Public safety.
Where do we start?
Well, everybody, it's back to.
Can they go outside the humps?
So attracting retain. Retain public safety employees. Again, kudos to the police department for having enough that fabulous, same for y'all. Coordinate partners to prepare for emergencies. I always take that as my PSA to make sure you guys all prepare. I come from Los Angeles, where, as you know, we kind of burned down in the last few months. So always come on out for things that are going to happen. And I'm developing innovative public safety programs, which is a broad way of saying, continue to do the good work that you're doing out in the community and all of that.
On the second one, can we add something about streamlining our emergency communication with our partners? That's something that we talked about during the flooding, but I would like us to continue to have a plan on how to do that. Does that make sense to you? Yes?
Okay.
I just want to also say thanks to the chief and assistant chief for the hard work you guys put in to getting us with all the employees now, because that was a big task and you guys really met the, met it. So congratulations.
No, thank you. I want to shout out to Natalie and Marissa and Devanna really allowing us to streamline some of those things. Where before it was like, you have to do X, Y, and Z. Was it really illegal?
No.
Is it unethical?
No.
But why has it taken us four months to hire somebody as opposed to a month and a half? You know? And it was an incremental change and some stuff was a little uncomfortable, but we made it happen. Thanks to everybody.
And that says a lot about your community and your city and your city hall and your staff, that people want to come work here, where they have choices to go to other law enforcement agencies. So look at it as a big compliment and you guys are doing great that people are coming here.
I think one thing I'd like to highlight, sorry for the interruption, but the officer that was back here earlier, he's an officer that left to Morgan Hill PD and just came back two weeks ago.
Cause we better.
And we just got word today that another officer that left to Morgan Hill is coming back. And then along with this guy, an officer who had left the San Jose PD came back as well. So in speaking with them, it's, it's just, you know, they were making more money, but there's just something about the situation here that felt like home to them, that felt like this is where I can actually do my job and make a difference as opposed to just chasing a paycheck and making more money, but not having the passion and the ability to, to make a difference. So I just wanted to highlight that.
That's great.
Okay, what was it? Because that was a good information. Not going to be a popular statement, so I'll start off with that. We have a tiny village that's coming in, and I'm using this as an example. But when, when we have things foisted upon us that are going to be using our, our resources, like the police department and fire, and of course, I'm supposing, and the truth will out as, as things happen, that is there any legal way for us to be able to say, just like with developers and with our art fund, public art fund, that we can say, okay, you're going to come in, but look, these are the things that look like you might be actually using resources a lot more than all the other folks because we're going to have to charge you some more money on it. And then they have to create that as part of whatever they're going to do because we only have a certain amount of people that are, right? And responding to these issues. And if it's always going to the same places, and it kind of is now, right? We have things going on in Watsonville that's regularly putting out fires in the middle of homeless camps all over the place. All these different things are, and there's nobody to actually go to that. But if, if there is an agency or a group that's funded, and they're going to do it, then that should be a part of their funding model, that we get paid for our services rather than they just get abused. So I don't know if that would be the coordinate with partners to prepare for emergencies. So if the two counties, one we're involved with and the one, you know, south of us, want to come in and tell us that they're going to do it, well, then they have to provide that because they're putting it in our city. That makes our people responsible for it, you know?
I think that falls under that because it could be considered an emergency. So I think that.
Yeah, and it, and it is. It's constant. It'll be constant emergencies.
Yeah.
Or not.
I just, right here, one last thing. I think we should also be working with our state elected officials because, you know, as for fire, you guys are learning how, we were just having a, with Amita, just having a conversation about the battery-operated cars and putting these things, these out. There's, Laredo-Laredo has a bill right now that would be really working, huh?
Oh, sorry.
That would be really working to.
He's naming the bill.
Oh. It would be really working to give the tools to the fire department on learning how to, you know, to address these new fires that they're, they're, this is.
Looking battery.
The battery fires that we're dealing with.
We'd be happy to get a resource for that.
Yeah, yeah, no, definitely.
Coordination is good partners. The state is still your partner.
Yeah, with our partners, because these bills are right now, in the state government, things are changing. We're rapidly changing, right? A lot of battery fires are going to be happening because of the cars and buses and.
And the county putting one in our area that we're going to end up.
I'm not even going to touch on that.
But you understand that's.
Do you have a question to that one?
That would be huge, right? Like, who's going to report staff visits in our area? It'd be you guys, right? So giving them the resources.
Two and three, grab those both for you, because public safety programs is having ways to deal with that. So I think you, you got.
Well, when you're saying partners, I was, I don't think of like, you know, government legislative, you know, bills. So, I mean, but.
No, your state, your state government is your partner.
Okay.
I would say.
But the county, that's a partner.
Not such a partner.
They should.
But I know, but like I'm saying, so that bill is right now, they're discussing that bill. Are we, are we part of that conversation? I don't.
I'm supervising.
We have, I just saw that moderate county, the supervisors, they did a resolution to support that bill. You know, and we haven't discussed it at all. So we should.
What's the bill number? You need the bill number?
I think it's 231.
231?
238?
238, yeah. Yeah. So, but we should be part of these conversations because it does affect our communities and.
Financially in a big way. And public safety for.
Yeah, that's a whole.
Nothing else?
I, and this is based on, you know, the findings from your pilot program. I feel like there's some public safety issues that can be addressed without really having a police officer there. I always forget the name. Public service.
Other research services?
PSS?
Police Service Services.
There you go.
PSS?
PSS. So depending on how that pilot program's working, potentially consider expanding it if we think it would be good.
That's number two.
Yeah. Whatever happened to neighborhood watch?
It's slowly kind of, well, I have one or two in my district right now. I don't know about other people's districts, but they're kind of starting to bubble up because, you know, our homeless issues are.
Well, with the new community services division, you know, we have a captain in charge of that. And we started last, we started last year on kind of reaffirming the neighborhood watch program in the old neighborhoods that had them. So they're slowly coming back.
I thought they were very effective of what I recall.
Well, I think they were effective for.
They are.
Right, just the community of the neighborhoods.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
We went through it all. Was there anything that you felt you could share with me that I missed?
I think, yeah, just thinking about all the issues that we talked about, the sort of like the political aspect, the advocacy of our city, that we don't, sometimes we don't coordinate, you know, enough even between each other or with staff. Like, you know, you guys are like, you know, day-to-day going after grants. We may be a help, you know, signing, you know, a resolution, and you guys never ask. Or, or I'm advocating for something here and staff is working on the other side. And so we, we're like, you know, then we get onto, I'm getting to fistfights over here and, and staff is doing something else. So, you know.
What if we added something on advocacy here?
So advocacy, be more centralized advocacy between each other's ends than working with staff. Because I don't think we have done that over time in, in different aspects, and we lose out. The big.
So are you talking about local issues like county issues or state?
You know.
Yeah. I just. Councilwoman, you know, he's the chair of RTC, and that's a unique position for our city to be.
Your chair?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that's what he's getting his fistfights. But advocating for, for road projects, right? And then understanding, you know, we have public works and we have Justin Weig, who is pretty connected with like network and transportation projects. And I, we've been having these conversations just recently, like making sure that, that he knows what we're doing and we know what he's thinking. Because if we don't connect those two, we might be advocating for the wrong thing without that communication. So, you know, Public Works, Justin and Councilor Montesino are starting to connect a little bit more often because that planning and the policy brain needs to connect. So we see it, I mean, we've been talking about it.
But yeah, like I said, also we, I think that sometimes we don't, we don't like, usually don't have a chair. Like I said, just. No, but like I said, just the kind of community sometimes with each other.
I know you were on it, I just didn't know.
No, yeah, but, but like, so, so when, if some issue comes up, a lot of these politics in the back room is like, oh, you guys are working on this and a slight conversation could go.
Yeah, run that, run that.
Or, no, I'm saying like, you're talking to an elected official and he's asking you, hey, you're, 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 the council's going after this part. You're like, oh.
So what about something like adding a fourth bullet here that's develop effective advocacy strategies to ensure for local control?
I like that.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah. So to cross all different agencies.
All, yeah. What's that?
You wrote that one down?
I wrote it down. I don't want to. Thanks, Frankie. Anyone else? That's conference questions.
I want to go on something that we said, agree up, right?
Yeah.
Okay, terrible, thanks.
That's.
Said throughout the presentation, it's something that I have always felt for a very long time and I hold very dear and which is why I get emotional, passionate sometimes, is, you know, you say that we are not as bad off as we think, right? And that is something that we, everyone in this room and everybody in the community needs to remind themselves of. It's not just that like sometimes the county, it's always this joke where like South County is looked down upon by North County, right? We also look down on ourselves, you know? And, and we don't think that we're good enough, right? And, and that's something we need to change within ourselves and it drives me insane where it's like, okay, well, this is the best we're gonna get, so let's just, you know, take it, right? And it's, it's the scraps, right? We need to fight for our community. We need to fight for each other and we need to fight for staff and council members, you know? We need to put ourselves higher in our own heads. Who else has an airport? Keep your nose up.
There's only one.
Who else in this county has an airport?
It's a good thing if you can keep.
Yeah, exactly, that's why I told you. But I mean, we have a resource. How many Fortune 500 companies do we have in this city? How many Missanders have? No. Maybe one or two, since Wrigley's and everybody else left. I mean, we have so many amazing resources down here. We have the foundation that we can build upon. And so let's start doing that, you know? Let's, let's not think of ourselves as, oh, the lowly South County and we're just, you know, we gotta rely on, you know, just grants and this and that. Build ourselves up so we don't have to rely on other people. Okay?
Great cheerleading. You guys are great commercials for your city.
Battle of the field. Get on the bad side and just say, I'm awesome, right?
I just want to say thank you, everybody, for showing up today. It's, you know, even though some of these conversations seem a little bit rough at times, you know, but they're important. And I also think those of us that sit on boards too, it's important to, when we're on those boards, advocate for our communities. You know, like I, you know, when I, with Metro, you know, I went, I brought staff in, they met with our staff and we're gonna be getting eight trash cans and those things were like $2,000 apiece. So, and I, and so, you know, it's being able, our job is to also be bringing you guys stuff. And we landed and we just land, we give it to you guys. And so, you know, so right now, so Metro's gonna be putting in like eight new garbage cans for Down Main Street and for Boulevard. You know, I sit on 3CE, I've been trying to, you know, trying to get as much like, you know, help from them as well to help, you know, get, you know.
Pay for the lights.
Pay for lights, the lights.
Just say, I'm free energy.
Not the free energy, but I think that we are also, we all, like, I think what Ramo said, like, we have to be working together, you know? It has to flow, like, we bring new stuff and give it to you. You guys work on stuff like, if we're not too, we are two different bodies, but like, we definitely have to work together and advocate for our community, so.
And a big, big round of applause to your staff.
Yes.
When I get my plane, I'm gonna fly into the airport.
Yes.
That a goal? Yeah. Thank you for allowing me to help you with these conversations. I think you guys would really have been in a good direction. You're in a good place and you're going to a better direction. So thank you. And I think you get dessert now.
After, after.
That's a good send.
So we, please will show up again in your dream meeting. We'll hope to be able to have, not only the umbrella nicely developed for today's session, but some detail on what we can at least the first year of the working.
Yeah, I just want to thank Tamara for everything that, you know, she done, she's done. I've been to a few strategic meetings and like a bunch of her waste of time, you know?
Maybe by partnering clients later and we've.
So, but over time, you know, I've worked with different city managers, CEOs and stuff, she's really listened, really listened to and engage where the council's at. There's difference in some type of thing, but overall, you've done a great job. You know, listening to like where this body's trying to push and we try to push and push you guys for, because we want a better community. You know, it's not, it's, I, you guys, I know, I, you know, but it's not, but it's coming from a, a place that I want to, you know, a place for a better community. You know, I want to challenge you. I have better expectations. I know you guys work hard day and night. You guys are awesome at what you do. But, you know, I don't want to see, you know, a community thrive and I got only three more years. So I gotta make it count. So I really, you know, from the bottom of my heart, you guys do an awesome job for, in the community. We just gotta keep it up and do better things.
Sure.
Thank you, everyone who came. Thank you, Tamara and Nick for organizing. And I think you guys have it wrong, you just want you to know. It's not that we downgrade ourselves. It's, we have a standard. We'd like to see everybody live in Watsonville. And, and a lot of it has to do with the flow of revenue that we have because there are people who can, who can do that standard of living on their own and then there are people who can't. You know, it has to do with equity inequality. And, and I think that's where we're constantly pushing ourselves. So I don't think we downgrade ourselves. I think we just look at it and say, you know, we need to do better in this session or we need to do better. And I think honestly, as electants, that's where we are. That's where we're supposed to be. We're always supposed to be putting our heads on, you know, with the thought, how can, how can we get this to be better? And then we go to the people like Marissa and say, okay, we need money to do this better. And she says, well, that's great. How are you even gonna do that? I say, okay, well, we need, we need a plan. And, and so the interconnectedness of, of how it goes down is positive. But I think we're very positive in Watsonville. I just think our, our peaks get a little bit stressed because the, the whole world, you know, is a little bit stressed right now. And we have a population that's gonna be really targeted and family members and, and that's just stressful. They don't know where it's going. And so when people get stressed, I can tell you as a teacher, when we had the recession, you know, and everybody lost their homes, it didn't matter if their kids were getting estranged, they came in screaming at me. And it really had to do with the helplessness of how, of how it went down for them. And, and, you know, they needed an outlet. So I think that's what our people are complaining about. It's just, you know, the general state of being. They were so happy to come out of that COVID moment where they could be out in public and with people and they go out to a restaurant. There's a different feeling now, you know? And so they're much more critical of it. But I, I got good vibes from District 7. I know we had three pages of comments, but. But there are a lot of great vibes. Our seniors like it. And, and what they don't like is the, the economy that's making it harder and harder for them to be, you know, to them to afford what they're doing. So thank you, everybody, that, that makes that happen for the city. It's our staff. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you all. So with that, we're gonna move on to item 3 from now, consent agenda. All items approved on the consent agenda are recommended actions that are considered to be routine and will be acted upon in a motion. Any items removed will be considered immediately after the motion. The mayor will allow public input prior to the approval of consent agenda. Do we have any clarifying questions from the council this time? Sure.
I'll leave it to you how you want to deal with it, Madam Mayor. There are three specific items that I have questions on. I would prefer not to pull them, but I will, want me to.
If you have technical questions.
Okay. Okay, so 3A.
3A.
I have a question, I'll shoot.
Yeah, really, we, we have nothing that we can discuss in our next meeting.
We have, everything is on your consent agenda with Geralmar for the 29 and that was, those were the items that we're showing up on that agenda. So what we did is to consolidate those items. We worked really hard, the team pulled it off to get those items ready for today. Otherwise, today we would not have items committed.
So no updates, no budget stuff, no class of study? We're not.
Not yet. It's all, it's all in the works.
Okay. And then 3G. Director Calabacca, what is this?
Yeah, I can talk a little bit about this. So the Parker Valley Collaborative kind of was born out of the South County Triage Group that started during COVID. A large number of nonprofit leaders, government leaders, whatnot.
The people that were at the plaza last week.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, yeah. And, okay.
So post-COVID, that, that group kind of, well, kind of went two different directions. So the South County Triage Group continues to meet every other Friday. It's more kind of, I say, bonding staff for a lot of, a large number of nonprofits and government agencies, so our city, a large number of county agencies. And then there's a separate group called the Parker Valley Leaders and that went to the Plaza in the morning. And it's, it's made up of more of the, I'd say, like CEOs, the second directors of all these organizations. They got a grant a couple years ago to the focus doing in health equity in the Parker Valley specifically, help, you know, looking at economic developments, civic engagements, and there's one other branch I'm totally forgetting right now. But this, this group is, is starting to kind of grow legs and become a little bit more formalized. And so we grant they have paid for a staff person to help take minutes and organize meetings and all those sorts of things. And they're asking the partner organizations to pass resolutions to basically sign on to become official members of the collaborative. So most groups are already done, probably about two thirds of the groups are already done, including County San Cruz where we're tail ended it. And so we're asking the council to adopt an employee to officially.
Does this cost us any money?
It costs us no money other than staff time. It's about 10 meetings and that's it.
Okay, okay. And then, thank you for that. And then Director Lindberg, 3H. 10 million, 10 and a half million? I'm reading that correctly, okay.
Yes.
I know, for hark and slew.
This is that pedestrian widening that we're doing to the, to the high school.
That little wall, wait a second, that actually happened?
No, 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 but this is, so there have been, I think two towns meeting to go, we came to accept the agreement, the co-op agreement with Caltrans. So it's been multiple steps along the way. We haven't even put it out to bid yet.
What about the sewage line? Has that been cleared out?
No, no.
No, okay, that's why I was like, whoa, wait, that's happening.
So we did that out, when was that? About six months ago? We did that out separately, was not successful. We decided we will rebid and win this project, lump it all together and then figure out the funding. Because as we were talking with PBUSD, they were like, we don't have the money, but then there was the election where their ballot measure passed. So some things have changed. We haven't revisited yet if, because there's been all these steps with the co-op agreement, getting their funding, waiting for CTC, commissioner meetings. And so this is just the next step.
Awesome, okay, thank you, that's all I have.
But there has been some conversations prior to PBUSD and the Don LaRue, the funding. You know, like you're pleading for this.
Oh, yes, thank you. We sent a letter in support of helping us with the additional unforeseen cost because of the sewer line.
Yeah, and that's wonderful because I know it was such a small hurdle to overcome in the grand scheme of things with everything else. Yeah, so I'm like.
You know how much money we've spent? We've spent over three and a half million already. Yeah.
Okay, that's wonderful, thank you.
Any other questions? No? All right, so before I bring it back to council for a motion, do we have any members of the public who wish to address the council on any of the items under consent? All right, I assume that there's none? Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion in a second? Any room for discussion?
Kind of super, we've already been given chances.
So can we get a call?
Carter?
Aye.
Maitre?
Aye.
Montesino?
Yes.
Carter?
Aye.
Who does Carter?
Aye.
Aye?
Motion carries.
Thank you. And item 5 from now, there's no emergency items added to the agenda. Item 6, oh, no. I'm German, may you return?